Testing 1, 2, 3. This will be the February 5th, 2014 City Council meeting.
Good evening. I'd like to call to order a regular meeting of the City Council of Satellite Beach, February 5th, 2014, approximately 7:00 PM. Will you please join Councilman Montanaro for prayer and a moment of silence? Oh, excuse me, a pledge.
Lord, we thank you for the opportunity to be here this evening to serve the residents of our great city. We ask that you guide us this evening as we make decisions for our city. Please watch out over our military members and their families deployed all over the world. If you'll join me for a pledge.
(inaudible) United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. At this time, moving on to Agenda Item Number 3, Citizens' Comments. I will take comments on non-Agenda items from citizens, Satellite Beach first, and then general public. So the floor is open.
Good evening, Council. Ron Jagudis, resident of Satellite Beach, resident in the CRA. First, there's several subject matters that I want to cover tonight. One, I received some information in regards to the skate park. And this is a concerned citizen stating that they live in the area and they are concerned with issues at the skate park, namely, the biggest issue is that helmets are not helmet the helmet law is not being enforced. And that bothers me. I don't know what's been done to rectify that. I know there was somebody here in the past who mentioned this situation, but I think that should be addressed because these are children that we need to ensure they are our future, even though they feel that they're very strong and invincible, but they need to be reminded of some of the issues going on as far as head injuries. And since we have lowered our insurance liability for certain things, that also concerns me that we could be, as a city, in a situation where an accident may happen. That's number one. I'd appreciate if Council and management take a look at this to ensure that our children do follow these rules and there is a reason. And if they were presented this information properly, I think they would understand. We all understand those things. Number two, I do have a concern with the response to our clerk of courts within the county, namely Scott Ellis. I was made aware of a document prepared by the city. I'm not sure who the authors are, but I am concerned with the issue that prior to sending it, prior to doing anything with it, that at minimum, and maybe that's, it is what it is, but this document represents our city. It may be management's decision to put this out there, but prior to something released, I would have hoped that somewhere in the agenda, this would have appeared, and not necessarily as a draft copy to citizens, but an Agenda item that is in the shade to represent it. Or, that would be a minimum, but at the greatest approach would be to open it up to citizens to ensure that this document is being put forward to the clerk of courts in a reasonable manner. I've read the report, and I find it interesting that, and we all know the process here, those who have paid attention with emails. That's an issue that I think will come up later. Now, what I'd also like to bring in here, and my time is running short, I am a member of the ICMA, which is the International City Managers Association, and there's a preamble of Code of Ethics of 12 points. I'm not going to say right now whether it's been violated or not, or it's broached the issue. That's something that somebody's going to have to internalize, whether it be Council or management, and citizens will be informed of this. And I will leave that alone right now. Then the next item I come to is anonymous documents skirting the law in regards to mailers and spreading them to various agencies. I do have somebody looking into that, and that's all I'm going to say to that. And I do have legal representation on it, and they've made some good crossroads. And the next item is...
Sir, Mr. Mayor, five minutes is...
Can I take 30 seconds, please?
I'll give you 30.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate that. My 30 seconds is, I am going to be, I've been requested to submit a document request via emails and other issues from a concerned anonymous citizen. And I want to ensure publicly that it is stated here and that the police and all those in law enforcement will not, will ensure of my safety related to this issue of this request, because I am in fear of this. And it will be presented to the clerk, the city clerk, tomorrow morning. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, sir. Floor's still open for citizens' comments.
Mr. Mayor, as a point of order, I would ask that the five-minute time limit be adhered to. If you start giving it into one, then you have to give it to all.
I'll take into consideration. Thank you.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the Council, members of Satellite Beach. My name is Floyd Beach. I reside at 436 Red Silkway in Sleepy Lagoon. In 2012, I approached the Council on an effort to launch a project to memorialize all of our fallen heroes from Iraq and Afghanistan. I presented this display case and gave a brief presentation of what we intend to do. Very briefly, the entire project will begin right here in Satellite Beach at Branson Nationwide. What I'm asking this evening is that I have an opportunity to meet with the Council offline and make a more formal presentation of what we intend to do regarding the project. What you see there is a memorial to Roberto Sanchez. He's been the only fallen hero we've had in Satellite Beach. But as of today, we have lost 6,667 others throughout the United States and our territories. I've partnered with the Chamber of Commerce in Melbourne and others to ensure that we can make this project happen, beginning right here. And 2014 is a defining year because we're beginning to pull troops out of Afghanistan and end this war. We cannot do anything until we do that. So 2014 is our planning year for Phase 2, which is Phase 3 happening in 2015 if we have the support. So I ask that you give me the opportunity to see you at another time and give you a more formal presentation. In closing, I would just like to say that I've had outstanding support from the community. I've had a lot of volunteerism where people have come to me and says, yes, I want to donate time. We've also had people come to me and say, yes, I want to actually do this project for you and with you, simply because we are with our troops. And for those that have served and are serving or continue to serve, and especially those that have made the ultimate sacrifice for this country, I think we can do this and put our, put our name to this for a very minimal effort. As an example, a student body in California raised $264,000 in six months through bake sales and pizza sales to provide a home for a wounded warrior. Our budget for this is not much more than that, to include all 7,000 of our fallen heroes to date. I think we can make this happen here, and I ask for your opportunity to speak to you again about it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Sir, if you would, please, Courtney, arrange...
I think you've called us at City Hall?
I'm sorry.
I believe you've called us already at City Hall to make a presentation?
I have not, no, ma'am.
Oh, you have not?
No. I've been asking that this evening.
What I would ask you to do is contact Courtney.
Yes.
And we'll make sure it gets set up.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Public comment?
Excuse me, I'll leave this display case here and also the binder for the citizens of Satellite Beach for your further review, and I could pick this up tomorrow.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Appreciate it. Further comment?
Well, my name is Pat Reader. I live at 788 Shell Street in Satellite Beach. And I am just, I would just like to go on record about the, I know we were going to discuss the beach refurbishment, and our street on Shell Street, I believe, is the only residential street that was used as a dumping point, let's put it. We had trucks 12 hours a day for two weeks coming up and down Shell Street. And I had talked to Mr. McGarry, Mr. McGarry, and asked him, couldn't there, some way McCrady Park be used rather than Shell Street? And it was said, this is the way it's been done before. And I'm just going to ask you to consider, if this has to be done before again, please don't use Shell Street.
Thank you very much.
I'm from Melbourne Beach, so I hope...
So if you'd like, you state your name and...
Okay. Pat Pasley from Melbourne Beach. I stand before you today astonished that a personal email between me and another private citizen has been posted on the City of Satellite Beach's website. Not only astonished, but outraged that my privacy has been violated, and for what purpose? Did someone forward this email to the city, and if so, why? Did someone criminally hack into my computer and access my private emails? Towards what end would the City of Satellite Beach post this private communication on their website as part of an Agenda item? Is this an intimidation? Are you concerned that the Brevard County Citizens Coalition is researching corruption associated with CRAs? To determine what my rights are in this matter, I contacted and spoke with legal counsel. They have advised me that my first step is to formally request that the City of Satellite Beach give me a copy of the complete correspondence in which the email from Greg Billman to myself dated June 20th, 2013 was received, and in the same form it was received with no redactions. In addition, I also respectfully request that all communications that refer to me or my husband David Pasley be produced once again without redaction. Then to ensure that other citizens, as well as I, understand our rights, I am asking the City of Satellite Beach to produce a copy of their policies regarding the following: the receipt selection posting and disposition of communications in whatever form between private individuals. I am also requesting information regarding who manages and supervises the City of Satellite Beach's website? Who asked or directed that this email be placed as an Agenda item, and for what purpose? I want to make it perfectly clear that I am not ashamed or embarrassed by anything written in this email, but I am outraged that public servants managing Satellite Beach feel it is their prerogative to publish private communications without the author's permission. I believe that it is the duty of all citizens to investigate anything that they believe to be a misappropriation of county taxpayer funds, and the City is of Satellite Beach CRA certainly fell into this category. And although this may not be quite on the level of NSA Edward Snowden debacle, it is chilling nonetheless when there is no obvious answer as to how private email has gotten into the hands of government and published for no apparent reason, with the possible exception of intimidation. I hope no other citizen of Brevard County is subjected to this kind of pressure and intimidation by government officials. I look forward to a clear and honest answer and explanation of why the City of Satellite Beach has chosen to place my private communication on their agenda, and I will wait for an answer before taking further action. I have with me three request, public records requests, which I will now hand over to Courtney Barker. Thank you.
Thank you. Further public comment? Here, Nun, close this portion of the public comment. A couple items...
Mr. Mayor, before we move on, again, misstatements have been made, and we, it's incumbent upon us to make a correction. May I speak?
Well, I was going to start and then let everybody...
Go ahead.
...answer questions. Mr. Jagudis asked on the skateboard, parked with the helmets. Carrie and I have been discussing that. I too went by there, and a lot of times, all the kids have them and sometimes a few of them don't. But Carrie, I know, has been working on that and schooling the people that work there to make sure that they do wear them. As for the insurance that was brought up, that we lowered, Satellite Beach is the same as Melbourne and the other counties on our insurance, and so we're covered the same way as any other city is. Courtney, could you answer the question from the last speaker on Agenda, on public record?
I'm assuming this is about the email from, to Pat... I'm assuming this is the email that's in the Agenda packet from Greg Billman to Pat Pasley. I don't see any email correspondence or anything written by Pat Pasley in this email string. But we received this email string from Trudy Infantini's office. This email string includes, I believe, two, three elected officials, so they're all public record. And we received it from a county commissioner's office, a public record request.
Thank you. Anybody else comment from Council on the public comment?
Yeah, this canard about corruption in Satellite Beach City Government and in the CRA has, has gone on far longer than any rational person could ever have imagined it would. But there are still some who won't let it die, and if that's what they want to do, then certainly they have that right. And they have their right to get up here and express their opinion about wrongdoing and misappropriation of funds and all of this nonsense. The simple fact is this: no competent legal authority has ever found wrongdoing by the City of Satellite Beach or its CRA, and that's the fact. The rest is opinion, is opinion and speculation that some just don't want to let go of.
Thank you. Any further comment on public comment? Here, Nun, moving on to Agenda Item Number 4, City Council comments. Who would like to start?
I attended both of the A-1A meetings that the city put on, and both of them were pretty well-attended. The first one had more people. It was the south part of the city. The second one was this past Tuesday night, and it was from basically Grant Ave north to the city line. And there was a lot of good input. In fact, the maps that David King, our engineer, had provided, there were several changes that were looked at based on comments from the citizens at those meetings, so they were productive meetings. And I also want to welcome the Students Against Tobacco that are here this evening. I met with them in one of the one-on-one meetings, you know, back last month, and I just want to welcome you again and thank you for coming. And I see you have extra people with you here tonight, so again, welcome. Thank you.
Sure? Councilwoman Dean?
Yep. I did attend the crack meeting, the last crack meeting. I also attended the A-1A concept meeting, the overall concept meeting, when they presented the entire length of A-1A. There was a public records request put in for all of my personal emails since I was elected. I'm in the process of fulfilling that public records request. I have a reasonable amount of time to complete that request. It's two and a half years of emails that need to be looked through. Not that they were all related to the city or official business or official transaction of the city, but I have probably over 8,000 emails that need to be looked through for content. So I will be turning them over categorized to the city starting tomorrow. I have no problems, problem with the records request. It's just going to take me quite some time to fulfill that request. I did review, or I did see the audit response, the response to the audit to the clerk of courts. For the record, I want to say that I did not have an opportunity to provide any input to that. That was a management decision that was made on behalf of the city. It did not come to City Council to be discussed in a, in a public hearing. Little disappointed by that, but it is what it is. If management has decided to respond in that manner, then so be it. But with that said, I'm going to make a motion that we request an Attorney General opinion whether or not those funds were spent appropriately or in violation of Florida Statute 163. So I'm making a motion that we request and put this issue to bread if there's, you know, as Ms. Scott said, there's no, nothing, it's all hearsay. So I'm making a motion that we request from the, I'm sorry, the Attorney General, an opinion whether or not those expenditures were done in compliance with Florida Statute 163. So that motion is on the floor.
We have a motion on the floor from Councilwoman Dean. Let me, one thing ask you here. Before we do this, would you like to have a council meeting and an, as an Agenda item? Yeah. So we can discuss this?
Sure.
We can get it on as an Agenda item?
At the CRA board meeting? I think that's more appropriate.
Do you want a CRA board, or do you want it at the council? Since this is a CRA issue, you want it at the CRA. Where would you prefer this discussion to take place?
Cliff's back there.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Okay. Would you rather have this as a CRA Agenda or a council?
For my purposes, it doesn't matter, and I think it's probably good to have the discussion. One of the things I was thinking is, the question was being made, is I don't believe that the AG does opinions looking in the rearview mirror. In other words, they don't judge past conduct. They only judge, I think, proposed future conduct. But I'll certainly find out if that's accurate. I'm pretty sure it is.
Okay. Thank you. I'd like to do it at council's request here, at the CRA or council?
This matter has been put to rest. We signed an interlocal agreement with Brevard County, and that was to end this. We can keep dragging this on until the cows come home, and, and it's not going to solve anything more than it's already been solved by that interlocal agreement. It's over. It's finished. It's time to move on.
It was asked to be...
I'll leave the motion on the floor.
Thank you. Motion on the floor.
Mayor, if you'd like, we could put it on the CRA board agenda and come with an answer back of whether the AG opinion would even, if they will even render the opinion or not.
Well, I, I, let's go back to the letter that came from the J-LAC. The J-LAC recommended that we get an AG opinion. So I know, I heard what he said, but I don't want to, I want an AG opinion, not an opinion from our attorneys that, that are going to say, hey, we believe, you know, you can't ask for an opinion because it was passed. The motion's out there. I appreciate the mayor recommending a workshop on it or bringing it as an Agenda item to discuss it. But that would put it to bed. The AG would come back and issue a formal opinion that said, yes, the city needs to pay the CRA back, or no, it doesn't.
Okay. I have a motion. Do I have a second? Dives by lack of motion.
I do have further comments. And also with, oh...
Excuse me. It was not Agenda item you brought up.
Okay. Well, he's waving, I don't know what he's doing. Also, with respect to the, the response to the clerk of court's supposed audit, or, and then our response to the, I'm sorry, with respect to the clerk of court's audit and our response to the audit, I'm going to make another motion that we, and this is, you know, you said some people believe that the CRA money was appropriately spent, some people don't. I mean, it's, it's one or the other. So I'm going to make a motion that we request from the Auditor General, a full operational audit of the CRA. That audit, although it may cost us some money, if there are findings, they will be put in, in an official document that we can respond to appropriately. And that would really put the issue to rest. You may come back with no findings, but if there are findings, then they can be corrected accordingly.
Isn't that the same one you just said before?
No, the first one was for an Attorney General opinion, the second was for the Auditor General to come in and do a full operational audit of the CRA.
That's a motion?
That would be a third party that would come in and look and put this issue to rest. Either, you know, we're refuting, we're going back and forth. Ultimately, we're going to end up in a lawsuit that's going to cost us thousands and thousands and thousands of dollars. So why not have the Auditor General come in, come in, make some findings in fact, and, and give us a written summary?
Let me, again, I thought this was put to bed. First off, council previous to this sent it there and was sent back with no findings. You brokered an agreement to pay back a portion of the funds with the prior council. That prior council, over the year, the years, or two years or three years they were there, had many chances and talked about bringing it to them. They did not. And the report that came back from the Attorney General or the J-LAC said they had no reason to look into it. There was nothing, a problem. And that's when you, if I'm not mistaken, brokered an agreement prior. So my question to you is, why didn't you broker that agreement to ask for that back then, the two other councils? And nobody has said in any of the agreements that anything was wrong. And we've been hashing this out for a couple of years now. So, you know, my question to you is, why, why didn't you do it before? Why, when you brokered the agreement, didn't you create to make, in your opinion, to cover the entire funds that you thought were not there?
Well, we went back to the 2008 Daytona Beach audit and used that as a threshold. We forgave all of the police and fire expenditures and went only forward from the 2000, that was, that was a decision ultimately that the entire council made.
Okay.
What I'm hearing from the community and with this dispute that we're in with the clerk of courts, we are ultimately going to end up in court, and it's going to cost us thousands and thousands of dollars. Why not just go to the Auditor General, since there seems to be a dispute over this audit, and have them make recommendations and do what the Auditor General recommends?
You're talking about the audit...
And they may recommend nothing.
You talking about the audit that was, the reply to the audit that went to Scott Ellis? Or the audit that they sent back to us and said there was no justification for it?
Yeah, I think you're missing the point. There's, we have a state Auditor General that could come in as a third party and do an audit. That would put the issue to bed.
You're telling us, or telling me, excuse me, and I apologize, but, that all the people in the city are coming to you. I've had nobody, what I've heard people tell me, it's time to put this to rest. It's been hashed over for a couple of years, two different councils, and when it went to J-LAC, they came back and said...
The J-LAC doesn't make recommendations or findings. They said...
All right. Again, just an opinion there.
Okay.
So anyway, it is a motion on the floor.
It is a motion.
Anybody else would like to discuss it, or is there a second to the motion?
I just want to say one other thing. This is, this hasn't ended.
Okay.
Because the clerk has put his audit out on his webpage, and we're refuting his audit.
Okay.
So it hasn't ended, and ultimately, we are going to end up in a court. And I would prefer to deal with it in a different manner, rather than go through an expensive court system, to go and ask for a legal opinion from the Attorney General's office and go to the Auditor General and come back with findings and deal with it in a more civil manner than ending up in a, at a trial or in a court system.
Okay. Mr. Mayor? Thank you. Yes, we have a motion, so.
It's a little late to get religion, as far as I'm concerned, on this matter. This all came up, it started in 2010. It, it really came to a head in 2011, and at that time, the city attorney, the latter part of 2011, prepared an excellent paper to go to. The state Attorney General, the newly-elected council that was seated in 2012 decided, no, they didn't want to do that. They wanted to declare among themselves that the city was guilty of wrongdoing and, and to come to some sort of an arrangement. That's what was done. Again, we've entered into an interlocal agreement with the county to settle any... Am I hearing... am I hearing birds? To settle any outstanding issues that may still be hanging there. The problem is that those who want this to go on, those who want to embarrass the city, those who want to bring the city to its knees, are not getting what they want, and they're not willing to let it go. That doesn't mean we have to play their game. If somebody sues us, that does not mean they will win. Let them sue. But they better have deep pockets also. I've been around here long enough. I remember a council member who sued this city eight times. Eight times, and lost all eight of them. He appealed all eight losses and lost all eight appeals. And he paid out the no's for that nonsense. So the threat of somebody suing the city doesn't intimidate me at all. We need to put this behind us. We've done everything in good faith that we possibly could, to include offering to go to the state attorney general when the issue was ripe. But no, they didn't want to do that. They wanted to drag this on to see how much more embarrassment they could cause the city. The party is over. Let's move on.
Any further comment? I have a motion.
I just want to make one further comment. You know, I am concerned about the pockets of the taxpayer. That's what I'm concerned about. And I think there's a better methodology to deal with this than going to court and digging into the taxpayer's pocket to pay for it.
I have a motion.
I'm concerned about the taxpayers' dollars also. And I'm also wondering if the taxpayers really know who's behind all of this, because it's a small group of people that are behind this. And basically, as Lorraine says, they're not letting this go to sleep. They had the opportunity to address this with the state attorney general in 2011, and there's even an email in this packet that alludes to the fact that they should have done it, but they didn't. They wanted to drag it on, and they wanted to make it bad for the city. And it's time that we moved on. We made an interlocal agreement with the county, and it's time we moved on. Because we are spending thousands of dollars right now, whether you realize it or not. And it's because there are certain people that have been behind this whole issue, and they're pushing it. And the reason why the letter was sent to Scott Ellis the way it was, is because this council made a decision that the city manager was handling that issue. It never was coming back to the council. We already made that decision. It was her job to take care of this issue. And we did that as a council. So I'm tired of hearing about who did what, who sent what, and why it didn't come to council. It didn't come to council because there were people trying to circumvent what we were doing as a city behind our backs, passing information to the clerk while we were sitting up here as a council. And that has to stop. And I'm sorry, but I'm fed up with this.
Thank you. Any further comment? Councilwoman Dean has a motion on the floor. Is there a second? Okay, here in no second, the motion rests. There is no public comment on it because the motion did not carry, and therefore, we're just having council discussion on, really council comments. Councilwoman Dean, any other council comments?
No, I think that's it. Thank you.
Councilwoman Breimer?
On a lighter note, as council had recommended, I've been following up with communities for a lifetime, our CFAL initiative. Just to let you know where it's at, and Courtney probably will get you involved in this, or whoever you'd like to designate, I have talked with Tallahassee, with the Department of Elder Affairs, and been communicating with Larry Baxter. He will be down on February 13th for the Brevard Commission on Aging meeting. He's going to come and speak to that. In addition to that, in addition to him being there, will be Randy Hunt from the Senior Resource Alliance. The purpose of him being there is to kind of give guidance to the Brevard County as a whole for renewing the entire CFAL initiative. Rocky Randles from the city of, Rock, no, Rock, which, thank you, Cape Canaveral, who is mayor, will be there. And he's the representative to the Space Coast League of Cities. So where it's kind of standing right now is that if we can have, and I've talked to Chief Hughes, if we can have an attendee there for this purpose, Courtney, that will be helpful with seeing what direction we go. I'll certainly be happy to step up to whatever, but right now, it's in the hands of the Brevard Commission on Aging, moving to the Space Coast League of Cities. So I'll be happy to take it up, kick it off with the Space Coast League of Cities. But we need to kind of get a grasp on how it's going to go. Right now, City of Satellite Beach is positioned to take the lead on this in the county. So if you can be there, and I've asked Don if he could be there, that would be very helpful. Any council people that can be there. So we're trying to get it off the ground, and that's all I have. Mr. Mayor?
Thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor, will you ask the gentleman to put his hand down? This is not the time for citizen comments, and this is very disruptive.
Sir, there is no comments at this time. Okay, thank you. Put up, okay. You have any council comments?
Unless he needs to get blood to his heart, then he can either put his hand down or leave.
Well, thank you. I'll take that into consideration. At this time, I'm going to continue with, at this time, I'm going to continue with council comments. Counsel, vice, excuse me. Vice Mayor, do you have any? Thank you. I attended the CRA, is our board meeting also, and the two A-1A meetings, and I think they were well-attended and a lot of great information given out. It's an interesting work that's going on. Please come. The next one is the Fourth of March, and we started this basically with a clean sheet. And we're taking everybody's comments down and seeing how we can fit this in. And it's a good process, and you'll see what they've come up with. Safety is one of the main factors that we're hearing at these meetings. To tell you a little bit on it, is in 1981, there was a study done on A-1A, or what people would like to see. And that study, someone sent me. And that study almost mirrors what's coming out of these meetings today. They want a safer A-1A, easier to cross, slower speed, they like it to look nicer, beach access is available to all the citizens, and it's an interesting to compare it. But please come, March 4th is the next one, and you'll see what we would consider more of a, nothing is ever final in this operation, because we have to show it to the state. But some of our wishes we would like to see, not really ours, but really the citizens, because that's where all the information came from. And John, thank you very much. I got a call from a gentleman who is a deputy city clerk in Boston area, and he just moved here. It's part-time for him now. And he said, he's had nothing but great, works with you, John, and he said to tell you, thank you for your effort, and he really likes what's going on. And again, somebody who was not from here mimicking almost exactly what the people in the city have been saying at these meetings. So it's good input there. Any further council comments? Okay, thank you. Moving on, city attorney's report.
I have nothing.
Thank you. City manager's report, Courtney.
Thank you, Mayor. I apologize. I'm recovering from a cold, so my voice is kind of going out and in. So if you can't hear me, I apologize. I can't speak any louder than I am now. Please do not forget about the Courage to Remember exhibit on the Holocaust, brought to us by the Foundation for California, the City of Cocoa Beach, and the Jewish Federation of Brevard, at the Cocoa Beach Country Club Auditorium in Cocoa Beach on Monday, February 10th, 2014. I understand it's the same night as League of Cities. However, I think we've already kind of divided our time. I will be attending the Courage to Remember exhibit, and I believe my assistant city manager will be at League of Cities. We will be having food trucks and a free movie on February 15th, from 5:00 to 8:00 p.m. at the DRS Community Center. This is a Valentine's Day event, and the movie will be Crazy Stupid Love. I think the attraction really is going to be the food trucks, since that's the first time we've had that in our community, if I'm not mistaken. And those are very popular. So if you want to eat some kind of gourmet food out of a food truck, plan to attend that event. Our last focus group for the A-1A engineered concept plan occurred last night, as the mayor indicated. We are getting great attendance. I'm getting a lot of actually emails from citizens emailing me, also kind of giving their insight on the plan itself. We have met with one business who had concerns, and so we'll be doing that with all the businesses down the corridor that have any changes in front of their business itself, so we can make sure that they're on board with the changes. The Pelican Beach Park playground will be getting renovated this month. It will actually be occurring most of the month. The final touches will be finished during the week of February 17th. We'll be basically removing what's there, redoing the grounds, and installing an entirely new playground. I put this on Facebook, and it was by far the most popular post I've ever put up there. Everybody's real excited to see the new equipment. We have postponed the fire truck financing agenda item until February 19th. We just couldn't get it together in time for this agenda, but you'll see it on your next. And then, I have some additional action items. The first one is the Recreation Department will be submitting a grant to the United States Soccer Federation, which will be for the lighting of one soccer field at the Satellite Beach Sports and Recreation Park, and the grant is for $50,000. This is part of that whole grant package idea that we brought to you with the partnering with the soccer club. So basically, staff is asking for your approval to go ahead and submit that grant. We've already discussed this in a past council meeting, but we like to get your approval on each individual grant before we submit it.
Okay, thank you. On this action item, any discussion?
I'll make a motion to allow the staff to submit the grant for $50,000.
I have a motion by Councilman Montanaro. I have a second by Councilman Breimer. At this time, I'll open up this action item for public comment. Here in the public comment, back to council, council comment? Nor, will you call the council, please?
Councilwoman Dean?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Bob?
Yes.
Councilwoman Breimer?
Yes.
Councilwoman Montanaro?
Yes.
Mayor Dean?
Yes, motion carries. Nothing. Courtney?
Thank you. And then the next item is that I attended a presentation. Police chief was also with me at the Satellite High School Auditorium. There's a presentation by Dr. Bingley to the local leaders, as well as all the teachers, regarding the school budget needs for the next year, and further on. And basically, I think, and this is obviously part of the educational process that he's going to be going through with the community on the sales tax referendum that they have on the November ballot, and I thought it would be a great idea to have him come to our community and do that same presentation to our residents here in our community. So I'd like to go ahead and get your okay to arrange that workshop with Dr. Bingley. He was very excited that we wanted to invite him to our community and have our residents receive that same presentation.
Do we need a motion, or do we just need to, consensus?
Do it.
Is consensus? Yeah, council? At this time, open up this action item for public comment. I think it's worthwhile. This is something we fought for, one we fought for, Seaparks, too. And I think we need to continue to find out all the information we can. Okay.
The next item, I just have one more that wasn't in your packet. I do have, in my contract, the requirement to keep my AICP. To be able to do that, I need to attend classes, and I have a due date, April 30th, to get my certification in. And so I'd like to attend the Atlanta APA Conference for two days, and that would be April 28th to 29th. So I'd like to get your permission to go ahead and arrange that.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Montanaro, second by Councilman Breimer. Any discussion from council? At this time, open this up to public for comment. Yes, sir?
Ron Jagudis, resident Satellite Beach, I commend you for attempting to get this certification or recertification. But I have an issue with perhaps policies and procedures need to be established for agenda items to be posted, for clarity and transparency for all citizens. It's not a question of whether you should or should not attend, but in order of bringing this forward to all citizens to understand, perhaps there needs to be a cutoff point for these items to be brought forward that pop up, and this is not the only item, that they should be a cutoff date for putting things on the agenda so that citizens are aware of this. This is one item that is fine, in my opinion, and that is only my opinion, not everyone else's. But then it cascades into other issues that are brought up on last minute, and citizens are not aware. And that's where I draw the line. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Further council comments? Excuse me, citizens comments? Apologize. Here in none, back to council.
Mayor, I'm sorry, I just have two more things. I did want to just point out the letter of recognition in your packet for the fire department and their team, from Sadie and John Baker. And I also wanted to extend...
Courtney, this one that we have, I need, may take a vote here.
Oh, go ahead, go ahead.
Okay, thank you. Lenore?
Councilwoman Dean?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Bob?
Yes.
Councilwoman Breimer?
Yes.
Councilwoman Montanaro?
Yes.
Mayor Dean?
Yes. That's carries by nothing. Thank you, Courtney, for calling.
Okay, sorry, I apologize.
Mr. Mayor, before we move on, I want to clarify something. I complained about this not being on the agenda. It is on the agenda. It's called the City Managers' Report, and in the packet that is also on the city's website, these action items are discussed. They're explained in full. So there are no surprises here.
Thank you. Courtney?
I did want to just point out the letter to us regarding our fire department, and specifically Captain Scott Manning, firefighter paramedic Shane Downs, and reserve Nick Walsh for their work and their accommodation. I also wanted to publicly recognize John Stone and his work with the A-1A corridor. He's been arranging the meetings and coordinating that entire project, and I think he's done a fantastic job in getting a word out to our businesses and our residents, and I just wanted to thank him for that. I also wanted to point out that, or kind of inform you, that he's also been taking the lead on the SNAP certification. I know that was a big deal for you, Councilman Montanaro, and also the mayor. And I wanted to assure you that we are working through that process, and that will be on the agenda for the workshop on February 26th. And we will have a response back from the EDC on our status, and what they're recommending us to do for that workshop. So I thought that was a good initiative that he took to do that, and I just wanted to thank him. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further report?
Nope.
Okay, thank you. At this time, I am going to switch agenda items. We'll move to agenda item number eight, and then we will take seven. Agenda number eight is Brevard Tobacco-Free Initiative. And let me introduce, tell you a little bit about, some of us were given some of this presentation a few weeks ago, and I can tell you, it was pretty great. It was very informative, and we asked the group to come back and get presented to council. And at this time, I would like to introduce Renee Ruffin Price. She's the director of Brevard Tobacco Initiative, and the Students Working Against Tobacco, which at the short is SWAT. And Renee, thank you very much, and appreciate you coming and presenting this to us again.
Thank you for allowing us to be here. Just to give you an overview, I'm Renee Ruffin Price. I'm the director of the Brevard Tobacco Initiative, and this program is funded through monies from the 1997 Tobacco Sediment Agreement that started in Florida. Out of the 67 counties, 66 counties are doing the same thing that we're doing. There are SWAT youth all across Florida that are doing this effort. We have a partnership of about 35 adults. We have SWAT clubs. We have five policy goal areas that we work on, including the flavored tobacco products, which our SWAT leaders that are here tonight are going to present to you. All of these are developed by the best practices identified by the Centers for Disease Control. These leaders are focused primarily on how tobacco affects young people. It's not so much the adults that they're focused on. It's really how it affects their peers. I'm going to introduce Mia, who is a SWAT leader from Melbourne High. She's going to introduce the other SWAT leaders that are going to present to you. Each person has their own slides that they're going to present. But I also want to acknowledge that we have some other additional SWAT youth from Satellite High School, and some parents, and a SWAT advisor who's also a teacher from Satellite High. They're part of the group here. So I'll go ahead and give it to Mia.
Hi, I'm Mia. This is Jackson and Jacob from Satellite High School, and then Devin from O'Gally High School.
Okay, as Mia said, my name is Jackson Solomon, and I am the vice president of the SWAT club at Satellite High School. Could you turn to the next slide, please? We have two statewide missions, and they are to educate community leaders who can help educate others how to take action that can help reduce youth initiation to tobacco products, and reduce the influence of tobacco strategies. The next slide shows the actions of many of Florida leaders. This map shows the City and County candy-flavored tobacco resolutions, and highlighted in red up there is Brevard County. We are a striped county. We are a striped county, meaning that we have both city and county resolutions. Next slide, please. The other statewide mission of SWAT is to tell peers about the dangers of using candy flavored and fruit flavored tobacco products, as well as the marketing tactics used by the tobacco companies. Almost 90% of tobacco users use, start using by age 18, and tobacco is the single most preventable cause of disease, disability, and death in the United States. In the seventies and eighties, secret, actually, that's the next slide, my bad. In the seventies and eighties, secret international documents from the tobacco industries proved that the tobacco companies were making plans for flavored tobacco products that would appeal to the youth, and they actually called us the replacement smokers, which is truly offensive to my generation.
Good evening, City Council and Mr. Mayor. I'm Jacob Kaufman, President of the Satellite High SWAT, uh, Group. What I'm going to be covering is the documents, uh, that we have here today. Next slide, please. This first document is from RJ Reynolds, a renowned, uh, tobacco incorporation. Uh, what you can see, uh, magnetized there is, uh, the quote, "Younger adults are the only source of replacement smokers." Repeated government studies, uh, have shown that, and it also gives a little bit of some statistics about, uh, what, uh, these tobacco companies are trying to do and the reasons they're doing it. Next slide, please. Uh, this is from Philip Morris, again, another renowned tobacco industry. Uh, the first two lines are the most really important. It says, "It is important to know how much, uh, as possible, as teenage smoking patterns and attitudes. Today's teenager is tomorrow's potential customer." And, uh, an overwhelming majority of smokers first begin to smoke while still in their teens, and that's really what we at SWAT are trying to, um, work against and trying to inform our fellow peers about what's going on in the world today and how to, uh, help them in this modern world." Next slide, please. This is, uh, the last document from Brown and Williamson. Uh, what you can see highlighted in that magnetized text is, uh, it is a well-known fact that teenagers like sweet products, and this is the reason why they're using, uh, candy flavored products and, uh, fruit flavored products like cola flavored, uh, cherry flavored and whatnot, uh, almost like modern medicines. Uh, and this has been, uh, a reoccurring thing, not just in the seventies and eighties, but also in modern times as well.
Good evening, I'm Devin from O'Gally High School SWAT. And another way that the tobacco companies have been targeting the youth is by creating these cartoon characters so that the kids would see them more often, such as Joe Camel. Joe Camel was created in order to entice the youth to keep searching for their products, and due to that, Camel's share of the youth market tripled. Now, these types of marketing strategies have been banned in 1998 due to their influence on the youth. Next slide, please. Now, when a child walks into a convenience store, this is what they see behind the clerk, a big wall of tobacco products, what we like to call a power wall. Next slide, please. Now, using chewed tobacco on school property, this is a youth survey data, and it states that students using chewed tobacco on campus were observed by 41% of high school students and 10% of middle school students. Adults using chewed tobacco on campus were observed by 13% of high school students, as well as 5% of middle school students. Next slide, please. And 17.5% of high school students have tried a flavored cigar, as well as 7.2 high school students have tried their first flavored smokeless tobacco product. Next slide, please. Now, candy and fruit flavored tobacco appeal to the youth for three main reasons. The candy and fruit flavors harsh the ma, harsh, mask the harsh taste of tobacco and makes it easier for the youth to use their first product. They smell just like candy and fruit flavors, and they're also in very brightly colored
Good evening, everyone. I'm Mia, and I'm from Melbourne High School SWAT. Um, as you can see, the Family Smoking and Tobacco Control Act was signed in, uh, on June 22nd, 2009, and this only banned candy flavored cigarettes, but it neglected to mention cigars and smokeless tobacco products. And in the next couple of slides, you're going to see pictures of how these certain products could entice the youth and how they're targeted more to a youth audience than a mature audience. Next slide, please. Here you can see that they're colored, like, they're in colorful packaging, they have fruits on them, they're bright, almost looks like a fruit roll-up package if you want to think about it that way. And these are all placed at a child's eye level when they walk into a convenience store. Next slide, please. And here are just a couple other examples. You could compare these to the beef jerky that you see, that's all grind up, and, um, even icebreakers. Next slide, please. These are some new things that came out by Camel, and it's called snus, and these are little dissolvable pouches. It's like dip, except you don't have to spit it out, it just dissolves in your lip. And you can tell that they're trying to conceal what it is, because it doesn't directly tell you on it that this is a smokeless tobacco product. It just says things like frost. Next slide, please. These are also new products that came out, and these are orb strips and sticks. The orbs look like Tic Tacs, the strips look like Listerine strips, and the sticks look like coffee stirrers. And as you can see, they're talking to audiences, because they're making them easy to conceal, easy to take to school without anybody noticing. Next slide, please. Um, like I said before, the orbs look exactly like Tic Tacs, and there were cases where little kids would go into their mom's purse and they'd try to eat these, because they'd think they were candy, and they got sick, so they had to create new childproof packaging. But then again, how childproof is childproof, and that's not teen proof. Next slide, please. And this is becoming more and more popular in Bavard County. This is hookah, and, um, as we are counting today, there's more and more hookah bars appearing in our area. Next slide, please. Um, a lot of people think that just because they are using smokeless tobacco products, that it's safer. It's not necessarily safer or a safe alternative, there's just different risks. Um, teens aged 12 to 17 who are current smokers are more than five times more likely to be more than non-smokers who drink alcohol, so this is just showing a correlation between alcoholics and smokers. Um, and this is our next steps, is we're going to talk to other city council members and other city councils in Bavard and participate in various activities in our school. And this is just our information. If you'd like to contact us for more questions, and, any questions?
Thank you so very much. Questions from council?
I have a comment that I think you'll be pleased to know. I saw an article in the Washington Post today where CDS Pharmacies, uh, has announced that effective in October, they're going to stop carrying all tobacco products, and they're kind of issuing a challenge to other, um, uh, companies to do the same thing.
Great.
Congratulations to you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Um, just, just one comment. I read an article, I'm in healthcare, so I read an article about a month ago. It said back in, I think it was 1962, 48, 48% of all adults 18 and above smoked at that point in time. So that's how far it's come since then. Um, I get, the question I have is, why not focus more on the healthcare issues this creates? I saw the 80% of the oral cancer and that sort of thing. But I mean, that, when you're, when you see people in their sixties and seventies that have been 20-year smokers, these people are in pretty bad shape. I mean, it's hard to see that when you're 16, 17, and 18, but boy, does it come home as you get to be this age up here. So I mean, why?
Hey, you are a lot.
Except for Cheryl, of course. But, um, why not, why not focus on, on some of the healthcare stuff that comes out of that? I mean, I, I know, like, Major League Baseball has really come out against the chewing tobacco, because it was, they were having a run of that way, years later with, with guys with mouth cancer. So why not focus more on?
Actually, we do. With the five policy goal areas and with the partnership members, there's different activities that the youth do. They're focused on other youth, they're focused on, uh, the resolution for flavored tobacco, they're focused on tobacco-free schools, that's one of the other policies that they're working on. But another piece of it is education, and the partnership members focus on the health issues, particularly regarding sensation. In fact, we've left some materials there on the table for anyone who's interested. It's, you know, there's never a, um, you know, a push or a pressure, but if anyone is interested, but the presentations that we do regarding sensation deal totally with the health issue.
Okay.
But with the youth, it's more trying to get people aware, because most of the time, I think Harvell, our SWAT supervisor passed out that display, most of the time when people see that adults, it, "I didn't know that." I've never seen those, because if you're not a smoker, you don't know, so we want you to know. But more importantly, we want you to share the information with the community, which we're doing by the audience here and, and anyone else that, you know, you share the information with. So we do deal a lot with the health issue. In fact, sir, over there on the table, there's a, a document like this, and I think we left one for each of you. The second page lists some of the health issues that have improved as a result of doing this effort since 2008. So I'm glad you asked that question.
Great presentation, guys. Thank you so much.
Thank you very, very much. And also, wait, we do have a resolution here, resolution number 945, that supports your guys' goals. And do I have, uh?
Don't move. Move to adopt resolution 945. Oh, you might, might want to read it first.
Hold on, Jim, will you read it first?
Yes. Resolution number 945. The resolution of the city of Satellite Beach, Bavard County, Florida, supporting the goal of the Bavard Tobacco Initiative, BTI, and Students Working Against Tobacco, SWAT, to disseminate information, conduct educational and prevention programs, and promote policy changes and enforcement with regard to tobacco. Requesting local businesses to restrict the sale and marketing of all flavored tobacco products where youth have access, providing an effective date and providing for adoption. So reading resolution number 945.
Thank you.
Move to adopt resolution 945.
I have a motion by Vice Mayor Gott, second by Councilman Breimer. Um, council?
Oh, I, I wanted to thank you for coming, and I apologize, when you were here, I couldn't meet with you in person, I had the flu, so I, I want to apologize for that. And I have two middle schoolers, and I was absolutely clueless about this. When you put, sent those shadow boxes around, I had no idea, so I'm going to go home and check that, their candy backpacks. Um, and that's my fault, so I, you know, I, I just assumed that was candy when you go in the store, so I want, want to thank you for letting you do and, and be proactive in the community.
I do a motion, at this time, I'd like to open up for public comment. Any public comment on the resolution?
Was there some parents here that have taken pictures?
Great, we'll get, thank you. Okay, I'll, I'll handle that in one second here. Any further public comment?
John Ferguson, 135, Maple. I presume you've already thought about it, but I'd suggest that this presentation go on to the city's website.
Thank you very much. Any further citizens?
Gabe Fine, citizen. I quit after 52 years. Uh, but I remember three times a day that I used to smoke. And how do I remember that? Every morning, when I pick up my Spireva and take a deep breath so I can breathe, I remember. And twice a day, when I take my Simicort and take a deep breath so I can walk, so I can breathe, I remember. And I remember, again, when I try to get dressed in the morning, I get tired just getting dressed or put my shoes on. So this is something that these folks might, uh, infuse into their program. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I have, uh, any further public comments? Hearing none, bring it back to council. Any further council? Lenore?
Councilwoman Dean?
Yes.
Councilman Montanaro?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Bob?
Yes.
Mayor Dean?
Yes. Thank you. Motion passes 5-0. At this time, uh, we're going to take a 10-minute break, we can get some pictures. Public record. Uh, and thank you very much. On the February 5th, 2014, approximately 8:20. Um, at this time, I'd like to move back to agenda item seven, update on beach reneur, re-nourishment project by Bavard County Project Manager Mike McGary.
Good evening, council. Uh, Ms. Parker asked that I, that I come and provide a brief update, feeling that as the project's, uh, been active in your city over the last month and a half, some of you might have, uh, had questions come up or appreciate an update. Knowing time's moving along, I'll try to keep it quite brief, and you can ask questions as appropriate once I wrap it up. The, the current project, we've moved generally from north to south, and we've, we've finished active work, uh, within the city. Uh, the final step will be native dune planting in the staging areas where we have yet to plant the dunes. It's, it's most practical. Uh, we'll have about seven of those staging areas, so in another few weeks, when we've finished all of them, then we'll come back and, and restore all the sites. Uh, we've got one at Patrick Air Force Base and a couple in your town, and, and four further south. Uh, so that's the, the last remaining step. In the broader mid-reach area, we hope to wrap up at the end of this week. The project placed approximately 190,000 cubic yards of sand in the mid-reach, and slightly over 40% of that went in you, in the city of Satellite Beach. Uh, so it's, it's been a relatively big project, and most of the sand is, is up high at the top of the beach, very at the dune or the top of the beach, it's above the high water line, uh, as specified in the permit. And we've been tracking quality control of the sand as required in our permits and monitoring that along the way. Uh, and to date, the results look good, uh, but the contractor will remain on the hook till all the, all the lab results are back. Uh, I believe all of them from in your city are actually back to me, but there are others elsewhere that were just, uh, we produced a lot of sand samples, so the lab gets a little behind on getting us results. Uh, but so far, that looks good. Uh, as I mentioned, the project as a whole should be done in about three weeks, that's including South Melbourne Beach, and then we'll be back, uh, before the end of February to plant those staging areas before the March 1st start of turtle season. So that's it on the, uh, on the current dune project, and I will leave it at that unless you have, have questions about that project or anything else.
First, take questions from council, and there might be some questions from the audience, from citizens.
Certainly.
Thank you. Questions from council first?
Mike, when you, when you talk about the staging areas and planting, you're planting the whole thing, you're just going to use those staging areas as the areas you plant from?
No, actually, this year, in, in previous years, we have two or three times planted the entire shoreline. This year, on the broader shoreline, many of the sea oats we've planted before remained on the high beach, so we're not planting the full seven and a half miles of the mid-reach. We are just planting the areas where, that we disturbed with truck, truck traffic getting the sand on and off the beach.
How about where our beach crossovers are? Are you planting those, or are they our responsibility?
They, they are your responsibility, and our office does, uh, sponsor a bargain sea oat sale every year. Paula Burnton in my office coordinates that with the help of KBB. So on our website, we, we promote folks to plant sea oats. Uh, in large part, it was a budgetary element this year. If, if I go to plant sea oats on 15 miles of shoreline, the price is large, and we were, we were really pinching pennies on the budget, so we're leaving it to private residents or cities like yourselves, if you choose, uh, to plant those areas yourself.
We have, um, in fact, I, I've talked to Alan about this, you know, Aquatic Plants of Florida, we have been in an, we've entered into an agreement with them back in probably 2003, 2004, where they come, pick seeds off our beaches, and we get plants back, uh, as part of the payment for that. And it was a, a program that we started way back, and Gil Sherrill called me, um, about a month ago and said, you know, "I noticed you guys are doing beach renovation, do you want plants?" And I think it's, it's probably rooted on our part now to let Gil know that, you know, we need these plants, and, um, they'll come out and plant them for us, too, so...
Well, if they'll come out and plant, I, I spoke with, um, Mike Daniel from the Surf Ride... I spoke with Mike Daniel from the Surf Riders Association. They are planting some plants at Pelican Beach Park on the 15th of February as part of a program that they've worked with Brevard County. They're also doing some areas in the South Reach area and some places in the Atlantic. I was going to try to work with them to get the plants from Gil, to have them plant those extra plants.
Have we told Gil to grow the plants?
The plants are there, and we have them in the bank. There's like 3,700 plants that we can...
Yeah, but they started the germination process, is what I'm asking.
I believe they have. Carrie, the letter that we had, they said they had 3,700 plants?
You have to give him some lead time.
Yeah, we have to notify him to germinate the plants.
All right.
So we need to make sure we get that...
Okay, but, I mean, down the road, we can do that. I think we're pushing it a little bit now with the turtle season starting in March. So, yeah, I'll get on the phone tomorrow with Gil and see what he has in stock. He may have some in stock. But I was hoping, actually, that the contractor was going to use aquatic plants, because Mike had given the contractor aquatic plants as a vendor, along with a couple other folks that he knows of, and they chose another company to go with. So I didn't... It didn't work out there, because I could have had them shipped over with them.
I'm more concerned about our beaches and our beach crossovers.
Oh, yeah.
I want to make sure they get planted good, because if we have any kind of storm that comes in, the better protected the beach crossovers are with sea oats, the more survivability they're going to be able to have. So, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
No, it's a fair observation, and certainly I encourage you and all the residents, it is a good investment to try to get those sea oats or other native dune plants put in place.
Other council comments?
I have some questions. Mike, I asked that you be here tonight. Thank you, because I was being bombarded with questions by the beachfront property owners, and they gave me a list of questions to ask you. Some of you, you've answered already about the plantings and when that's going to happen. I guess one of the rumors that's going around or conversation out there is that the Army Corps project is not going to happen, there's not going to be any more sand in the mid-reach area?
No, that is not the fact. The Army Corps project is... It's in their process, which is painfully slow, but it is moving forward. We're right this week. I have been working with them to finalize a PED agreement. PED is preconstruction engineering and design. We finished the feasibility portion of work with the Army Corps of Engineers. Now they do this preconstruction engineering and design, and they need a legal agreement between the Corps and the county that says we'll partner in that. I expect a draft of that contract in a month or so for us to execute, and once that preconstruction engineering and design, they expect that will take on the order of 18 months, and that would be followed by construction of the project. The best forecast I've gotten from them, and it's really best case if all the money comes in line and their schedule doesn't slip, is to build that project between November of 2015 and April of 2016. I will push for that, and I'm hopeful for that, but I would forewarn you that nothing they do is easy or uncomplicated, and it may very well slip one year from that. I'm not admitting defeat, I'm just being realistic, and that in large part is why the county commission and the tourist development council that provided local funding said it's worth doing this smaller project now, because while the Corps project is in the future, the beaches were in pretty bad shape right now, so they hoped the current project would be a stopgap measure to hold us the next couple of years and provide a little more protection as well as recreational beach.
Okay, so we'll put that rumor to bed there. Thank you. And then there was a property owner that, I guess, a turtle had nested, and there was a gap, a 20-foot-wide gap. Were you aware of that? Was that taken care of, where they just kind of stopped?
Yep, I was aware of that, and I... We spend a lot of work to get permits for these projects, and part of that is getting approval from the U.S. Fish and Wildlife, so we avoided that turtle nest.
Was there a nest there? There was a nest there?
Yes, there was a nest there. It was a very late-season nest, and we put sand there about a week ago.
Okay.
But it was... We waited until the turtle researchers tracked nests elsewhere and said the nest, you know, they were confident the nest had hatched, if it would ever hatch. In fact, they gave it a few weeks of leeway, but I took that step because we have to keep the environmental permitting agencies, they have to have faith that we're taking every measure possible to protect wildlife, so that's why that homeowner had to wait till the last minute to get the sand, but it has been completed.
Okay, good, thank you. And then, did all the property owners sign the easement agreement? And if they didn't, did they not get sand?
In the city, there's one property owner who did not sign the easement for this project. It's a vacant parcel toward the northern end of the city, and we were forced to skip placing sand on that project. Before the federal project is built, we have to have an easement for that property, and I'll have to go back with the help from the county attorneys to determine a solution. I noticed the property is for sale, and I've been hopeful, well, you know, maybe if it gets sold in the next six months, if someone's going to build a structure there, they may very well want a beach project, so that is the single property in the city that we did not successfully get an easement for.
Okay, and then there was a comment made, and I've been questioning about this, that the more parking the city has, the more sand they receive. Myth or fact?
It's a semi-truth, as far as state grant cost share. Typically, our beach projects, we get cost-shared funding from the Department of Environmental Protection. They have a beach nourishment grant program where the state funds up to 50% of the project. In order to get 50%, you have to have adequate public parking, and the state has rules that define that. Each parking space gets you 52.8 feet of beach that qualifies. Generally speaking, we've got pretty good access, but there are a few spots in the mid-reach where there are slight gaps. Rather than 50% in the mid-reach, we would get 47.4% state cost share. So almost the whole beach is publicly accessible, but I have worked with staff in the past, and the thought of getting the overflow parking in High Tower, I know there was a lease for Across the Street, and that excited me, because I thought, oh, you know, that could be maybe 1% more cost share. We're pretty good throughout the city, but if we were to lose parking, we would lose cost share, and that would be problematic. If the council ever has opportunity to add parking that suits your citizens, it might provide benefit to the funding for our projects, and I'd be happy to work with the city manager or provide information on that if you have plans to change beach access parking.
We do. There was another, a couple more questions, and I know Ms. Bright Reader was here earlier, and we had talked when this project was, you know, happening right there on Shell. How did Shell get picked in lieu of another location for staging?
And the first time that was picked, it was in large part because the road was so close to the beach that it really minimized impact to the beach. And honestly, the first year at staging sites in the sand budget, initially approved by FEMA, which kind of set the benchmark, there was a little bit of extra sand at the staging sites to make sure those sites were fully restored, even slightly better than the neighboring properties, to make sure a staging site never suffered, that it would benefit. And that road was very nearly undermined by the ocean after Hurricane Jean, and the city manager thought, "It's right there next to the beach," and the city was rewarded by getting a little bit more sand and sea oats a little sooner. So that's really how it started. All the staging sites, there are neighbors that, I mean, I... It's unfortunate, it's disturbing wherever you are. It's not just Shell Street, even though that it is a residential street, but we try to minimize it, and it's on the order of two weeks every... In this case, we hadn't been there for four years, but that's how the site came about, and it really minimized impact to the dune because the paved road was so close to the ocean, and that's really what started that site selection.
And then I think there was just one other question. You know, you hear this, "Oh, they got more... He got more sand than I got." How did you determine the amount of sand in front of the property? Because I did notice there's definitely some elevation change, and then when you get to the city property or the beach crossovers, there's a lot of sand, because that question has been posed to me, and I didn't really know how to answer it.
The general volume of sand immediately after a storm event, I went and rode the beach with someone from my office to help and made observations of the level of erosion. And we measured the height of the escarpment, and using that geometry figured out how much sand, in, you know, my observation, using measurements, how much sand had been lost. Each time the level of erosion changed, if we were riding down the beach and the escarpment or that sand cliff, if it went from this high to this high, and I could detect a difference, we'd stop and make a new point, and then measure that next section until it changed. That measurement was done with no regard to what was west of the dune. Sometimes the measurement changed right in the middle of a house, right in the middle of a park. It was not on property lines. It was just right after the storm. Now, after the storm, the beach recovered to some degree, so perhaps the volumes didn't match exactly what still needed to be replaced, but that's how it was measured, and it's... That's how it was approved by the state when we got a permit, which was about a year before we started the work, so that's the path we followed.
Well, I think, thank you. I appreciate it, and I will get back to the property owners with the answers to these questions.
Thank you.
May I just add one? If, for the long-term project, what timeframe would be a good time for you to come and present that project to your council and to the community? The Corps project, the Army Corps project?
The Army Corps project, I think, I would say early summer, because I'm up to my eyeballs with the projects going on now, and I know the Army Corps, they're revamping their schedule now. Before tonight's meeting, I asked for the most recent update, and I got some verbal points on the phone, but I think in early summer, as it suits your needs, May, June, July. I'm really available anytime, but I think if we wait a few months, I could provide a little more up-to-date information.
Okay, that'll be good. All right, thank you.
Mike, the other reason Shell Street was picked originally, in addition to the reasons you gave, was it was a truck queuing. You can get the trucks off the road. It was a public safety thing back in there. It was a little safer so that the traffic didn't have to be stopped on A1A like it is down there by the old holiday...
Paradise Beach, yeah.
And a perfect example, I think it was a couple Thursdays or Fridays ago, there was an accident where people didn't stop when the guys came out in the street, and there was several cars that ran into one another. So that was the other reason, a long time ago, and I can't speak to now, a long time ago, was a public safety thing, is the trucks could queue a lot quicker, and it was a lot safer at that particular location.
Yeah, and I do recall the same thing, but it's been a number of years, so thanks for pointing that out.
Mike, the staging sites, those are the ones you're going to vegetate, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Great. Any further comment from council? Mike, I ask please to hang around and help us answer any of these questions that could come from citizens' comments.
Be glad to.
Thank you. At this time, I'll open it up for citizens' comments. Please.
My name is Matt Fleming, 1777 A1A. Is the city aware that the EPA and the Army Corps of Engineers are investigating the fill material used in this project for three different violations? It's a violation of grain size, mean grain size. I have seen data that says it's the mean grain size of material that was put down there is .15, and it needed to be between .25 and .55. Now, what happens with this, you have silting, which is going to, as this erodes, which is intended to do, is erode into the ocean, you're going to have sediment-filled water for years. On top of this, it makes it a lot harder for sea turtles to dig into the dune. Now, the second violation is this material contains biological material, specifically high amounts of carbon, which is from decomposed plants and such. And what that does is that washes into the water, it'll create a really significant imbalance in the water on the reef, which is defined as essential fish habitat by the National Marine Fisheries Service. And what happens with that is you're going to get algae blooms, you're going to have sediment filling in the rocks where the organisms shelter, and you're going to see a decline in shoreline fishing quality. They have measured the decline previously with these projects in turtle nesting. Now, the third one is, what was it? Grain size, biological material, and I think that was it. The third one was the fact that it's cementing as it compacts up on the dunes. Until it washes away, re-exposing the old sand, the turtles aren't going to go dig into it. Are you guys aware that that is being investigated, and what is the city's position on that?
I'd have to ask, Mike, to answer that one for us. We have not been notified by anybody on that.
Did you guys do any testing on your own independently to see...
No, it was a county project.
If the county was... Or the contractors were following the permit, since it is within the city.
Right. I think Mike answered some of that, didn't you, that you had samples of sand that was out, and you were waiting for the report, so you got it back?
Yes.
Could you answer that for me? Please.
Certainly. I was aware that complaints had been made to EPA. In December, I noted that at the Ocean and Reef Festival at Pelican Park, some flyers were passed out on windshield suggesting folks call EPA. EPA contacted the state who handles the environmental permit, and just today, actually, I got a note from the state that as a result of those complaints, they collected samples in addition to the quality control we complete. The state had sent their representative, and they collected samples at Pelican Park, Cassia, and at Paradise Beach, Futch Park, and had sent those to the lab and found the material was in compliance with the project's quality control QAQC plan that's an attachment to the permit, or is part of the permit, the requirements we meet. With regard to compaction and turtle nesting, we monitor turtle nesting every year, and in fact, the dune template that came about in Brevard County several years ago, the first year we built this, is now the recommended template. But we measure compaction of the sand after it's placed on the beach to make sure it's soft enough for turtle nesting. That's a permit requirement. To date, it's only been done in the northern stretch of beach, just in the northern end of the city up to Patrick Air Force Base. I haven't gotten the results from further south, but the measurements of sand compaction, which is done specifically to make sure it's not too compacted for turtle nesting, have come back well under the allowable threshold. So we are... We're doing our best to track that. I appreciate the residents' concern, and it is important to mine the quality of the sand, and we are tracking it to make sure the contractor is required to meet the quality control plan. And the indication I have now is that's being done successfully, as well as the state's independent samples that they collected in response to citizen requests.
Thank you very much.
Yes, please. I understand that the state and the county are doing their own monitoring of this. I understand the contractors are doing their own monitoring of this. The investigation that's moving forward is being conducted by the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers Enforcement Division, and my question was, are you guys aware of that, and what is the response to that? The... The state and the county's numbers and the QAQC plan are not relevant to the 404 permit issued for this project. The water quality certification is. The water quality certification, the 404 being Section 404 of the Clean Water Act. You can't place foreign material or a pollutant within a watershed area knowing that it's going to wash in to the national waters. And so my question is, is the county and the state giving you guys information? Is that satisfactory to you guys or are you curious to know what the federal part of this investigation might entail?
I would like to see a follow-up at the next meeting to inquire if the Army Corps, what this investigation is about.
My understanding is that they're supposed to finish up their work with the National Marine Fisheries Service in the next week or so. That's just what I was told.
Mike, any?
Who are you contacting?
I'm in contact with Jeffrey Collins. That's the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers Project Manager. I'm also in contact with Teresa Hudson. That's the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers Enforcement Division Chief in Jacksonville. I'm also in contact with Eric Hughes, who is the EPA, something division chief. I think it's the Projects, Coastal Projects Division Chief in Jacksonville.
I'll look into it.
Look and talk for you.
All right.
Thank you. Is there anything you can add to this, Mike, for us, right to this point?
Well, to my knowledge, the EPA or the Army Corps of Engineers have not asked me for information directly. As I understand it, they're working through the state and that may be part of their process. And the state has provided, the Army Corps of Engineers asked the state for information and the information the state, which the state shared with me today, was provided to the Army Corps of Engineers early in the week as part of the state's response to that inquiry. But I don't have direct detail on the federal process, except that the state agency told me they had been asked by the Army Corps to provide this, to do some background work, and they had done so and provided a response to the Army Corps.
Thank you very much. Any further public comment? Yes, sir?
I just wanted to leave it in the, Mr. Fleming, if you could contact him.
Ron Jagudis, resident, Satellite Beach. My question is, now that I know that the city has got an agreement with the company to receive sea oats, and that is all good, it all goes to city properties. But I question the issue that taxpayers on the beach who support this city, residents who own properties there, perhaps they can get in the cost share program for sea oats. Because I'm sure many residents were not aware that there was not going to be any sea oats put on properties other than to renewest the areas where they were staged. And I think that should be addressed for the citizens who pay taxes and help support the public accesses. Secondly, as Councilwoman Deenan brought up, a little more than, there was a rumor going on that there was more sand put on the properties that are owned by the city. And it is grant sharing program and that's fine, but once again, the taxpayers, the resident owner taxpayers are slightly shorted. That's a question to consider. When we have a CRA, perhaps they could have, because the majority of the residents on A1A are within the CRA, perhaps the CRA could have contributed towards this project to ensure the dunes are even higher, to protect the properties that provide the tax dollars not only to the city but to the county. And I've had many meetings and discussions with Mr. McGarry over the past six or seven months in regards to the dune restoration. And I know we had their staff out here at one point and I failed to realize why the city did not have a meeting until discussion to ensure that residents knew what was going on, especially for the CO3 nourishment. Because our agreement, Easman, says that those sea oats will be maintained. That's probably not the case at this point. And then I proposed, because of the properties, sand shift back and forth, but I had proposed to not put as much sand as close to the shoreline for the simple reason that we got nor'easters and wave action going on. And I had proposed that the dune should be built back a little higher, further back. That's not the case.
Sir, Paul, your time's up. Thank you. Five minutes is up. Thank you very much. Or three, excuse me. Alan, is it possible for citizens to piggyback on the vegetation?
Well, we can certainly, you know, talk about making some of those plants available to residents, you know, that want the plants. You know, that's always a great idea. That way, you know, that provides protection for them as well and if they're willing to plant them, you know, maybe just give them a certain amount per, you know, household or per lot or however we want to.
I think a cost share was what was mentioned. And is there a program that the county has as a cost share program for getting, because I know there are some residents that are getting sea oats, is there something available to them in a cost share? Because there, I don't know that the plants that we're going to have as the trade would even come close to being able to give out to the whole stretch of beach for residents.
Well, that's why I said we need to look into it. I know Paula Burnson at the county does have plants available for sale at certain times of year.
The county's program, which has been posted on the website since December, the delivery is Saturday, a couple days from now. It's too late, it's too late to purchase them through that program. It's been scheduled like that every year. It's on the website. There's been media releases, but it's too late to participate in now if the residents haven't already done so. If it suits you, I mean, and the residents would like to purchase, if in fact you're getting plants from Aquatic Plants of Florida, they may be able to deliver others for, you know, purchased by your citizens if even that logistically might be difficult, given how close we are to March 1st. But the county's program, it's too late.
One other question. In this program we started, was it stated that you were going to vegetate the whole section?
No, the Easman says we may vegetate. We have authority to vegetate, but it did not, it did not promise we would. And this year, as I stated, if only the eastern toe of the dune was eroded, there's a lot of sea oats left at the top, whereas some hurricanes, there's been no sea oats. It ate right back into people's yards and in those instances, it was very beneficial and it was justified for the county. We spent $800,000 one year planting sea oats, but this year, there were enough naturally remaining that we decided to try to give it a year to naturally recruit.
So your scope of your project, the way it was presented, is going to be complete and full?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Courtney, could you check into if we can piggyback, Alan, and see, you know?
And I would encourage you to ask Gil if there's, you know, some availability of other sea oats that he's willing to sell and, you know, what kind of arrangements we could make to get them to our residents at a reduced rate, if that's at all possible.
Sure.
We'll talk tomorrow. Thank you. Public comment is still open.
Do we have money from the women's club that we could possibly utilize for some of the areas that Councilman Montanaro was talking about that would not be covered by the sea oats from the grower? My understanding is we're going to do the staging areas?
I think that's what their agreement was.
But Councilman Montanaro was talking about some other areas, beach accesses, that this would not apply to. And I believe we have 125, 150 K set aside from the women's club?
For a project. Is that correct, Courtney?
Well, right now, it's for our reserves for two years.
Oh, reserves.
And then after that, it will be transferred to the CRA for a beachfront project.
Okay. So it's in the city reserves. The money that was specifically designated from the women's club to go to beach.
Yes. It allowed us to hold it into reserves for two years in case we had a hurricane and then we could clean up the beachfront with it.
Okay.
And then after that, it'll be transferred to the CRA for a beachfront project.
Okay. Well, this all happened because of some hurricane standing, right? This beach issue that we have right now?
Well, we're holding this in reserves in case we have a hurricane. I mean, that's why we made that agreement with the women's club is because we had no reserves and I was worried about getting a hurricane and not having anything to clean up.
Does that also cover nor'easters?
It would cover any disaster that hit the beach.
So it would have to be declared a disaster in order for it to cover it? Because the governor has to declare the area a disaster, so you or the council members would be the one making the decision to declare it a disaster?
No, we wouldn't have to declare it a disaster in the state funding sense of the word, but it would be any storm event that would need cleanup from the beach, yeah.
Okay. All right. The other thing is, is that I would like to point out about the staging areas. Shell Street is the only residential area that has a staging area. We had South Patrick at Paineha, we had Gemini, Shell Street, and down by the Crown Plaza. So three of those were vegetated areas. So I think going forward, if we have to do any staging in the future, I would suggest looking at Karate Park, because when they get done with it, they're going to make it look better than it was because of the replanting and vegetation. And the, I also feel that the road on Shell Street has been affected by those trucks coming through there. Okay?
Thank you very much.
You might want to think about that.
Appreciate it. Further public comment? Here are none. Bring it back to council. Any further comments from council? Hearing none. Mike, thank you very, very much. Appreciate all your work. Okay, moving on to agenda number nine, discuss, take action on fraternal order of police contract. Courtney?
Thank you, Mayor. This is the contract for the FOP union. This is a three-year contract. It's been voted on by the union already and approved unanimously. I'd like to just point out some of the substantive changes to you. I sent you the strikeout underlined version by email. In your packet is not a strikeout underlined version. The contract itself has changes in Article 1, which is recognition, on page five. That's a non-substantive change. Union business, on page 13, a non-substantive change. Grievance and arbitration, again, I would call that a non-substantive change. That's on page 19. For promotions, it's on page 25. This basically would have very little impact on the city itself and that's basically saying that if there's a vacancy in which a promotion is, there's an eligible list of people that need to be, you know, that are eligible for the promotion, that the city would agree to do that within 90 days. Again, if we don't have the, if we don't have it funded, then, you know, it'd be a non-funded position and there would be no position to promote to. So it's really not an impact on the city. Hours of work and overtime on page 27. This changed largely due to the meal allowance is, we changed it to city policy, basically, for the cost of the meal allowance. $6 isn't going to get you much of a meal nowadays, so we wanted to change that to reflect city policy. And then we also changed it from, basically, this is, we provide a meal allowance to employees who are required to work over the end of an eight-hour shift for more than, it changed from four hours to five hours. Holidays changed on page 29. I do not see this as a substantive change. Basically, what we did was we agreed the holiday pay for fire and police. We did that this year. We provided that in November rather than the end of December because it provided them funds for Christmas. It's really no big deal for us to do that. All it did was change when we would do that. The next change would be on page 31, in which we struck out a provision, a number of provisions. This has more impact on the police chief's ability to manage, so it really was actually a win for that, from that standpoint. And basically, it changed subsections of their uses of vacation. It eliminated some segments that just didn't pertain to what happened now. So it's just changed over time. Funeral leave is on page 40. This is a substantive change. I wanted to point this out because the change is not to give anybody or get any, or get less with anybody. It actually was a change to reflect that the police department and the fire department don't work days, they work shifts. And so many of those hours are longer than an eight-hour day, so three working day didn't make any sense. So we changed it to hours. That's really the reason. Insurance on page 43 has to do with benefits, health care benefits. We've changed that to match IAFF, which you'll see in the next agenda item. And this is to reflect the current city practice for provision of insurance for our employees and it matches the citywide provision for all employees. Vision care services on page 4054. Again, you recall when we went through the switch from Health First to Cigna, we agreed to provide the employees a vision care plan. It actually turned out to be less expensive and better. This is just memorializing that decision. And on page 58, we changed the list of attachments, which is non-substantive. And the term of the agreement on page 60, we put in a re-opener. The FOP did not want to remove the set plan from their contract, so we put in a re-opener hoping they will next time. But that is something they wanted to keep in. It's currently not funded, but they wanted to keep that in. So that's their proposed contract for year approval. It does match what you gave us in terms of direction. They received nothing more, nothing less. But we did change some things that just either won't work anymore or just needed to be changed.
Thank you very much. Council, comments?
I have a question. You said the vision care, page 54. On B, it still talks about reimbursement. Shouldn't that be taken out of the contract since we have a vision care plan?
Yes, actually, that's, I'm glad you pointed that out because that, A, B, and C, all of that would be removed. So that's just an error. The, where it says vision care services will be provided in the first paragraph, that's actually the inclusion. The rest were all supposed to be striked out. Sorry about that.
And then?
The first paragraph, that starts with vision care services will be provided as part of the city health care insurance. During the term of this agreement, should vision care services not be provided as part of the city health care insurance, the below previously, oh, I'm sorry, it does reply. Yes, I'm sorry. They basically, we went back and forth on this. The first paragraph is what's implemented and then if we ever not provide that again, then the contract will fall back on what we've done previously. So they basically didn't want to change everything and then the city stopped providing the vision care. care services. So I apologize, that all remains the same. Thank you, Chief.
So what are you striking?
We're not striking anything. I made a mistake.
So what you're saying is that's a sale?
Page 54 is correct, yes.
Well, then, shouldn't it be like in lieu of? Then we would reimburse, because it's kind of, if I read that, I would say I get vision care and I get reimbursed.
No, it says, "Vision care services will be provided as part of the city health care insurance. During the term of this agreement, should vision care services not be provided, the below previously negotiated vision care services shall apply."
Okay.
That's a fail-safe for them, but they'll have to.
And then I do have one other question from Mr. Halsby. On the next page, 55, the city and union agree that internal investigations shall be conducted in accordance with Florida statute 112. Can you review that process?
Sure.
What is the internal investigation process under Florida statute 112?
The internal investigation process is essentially where some employee under the bargaining unit is accused of wrongdoing of some sort. And by Florida statute, there is a process by which an investigation into that conduct needs to be made. It essentially guarantees the employee various rights when they're interrogated. There's different provisions relating to how many hours you can interrogate them, their right to counsel, where they're interrogated, things of that nature. The ability for them to be able to review statements of others before they're interrogated, those kinds of things. It's essentially a procedural kind of thing that applies to investigations. That's really what 112 is about.
Any further questions, councilman? Any further questions from council? At this time, open up for public. Here are none, back to council. If they have a motion, accept.
So, I have a motion by Councilman Montanaro. I have a second by Councilman Breimer. Any further discussion? Here are none, Lenore?
Vice Mayor God?
Yes.
Councilman Breimer?
Yes.
Councilman Montanaro?
Yes.
Mayor Dina?
Yes, motion carries, five, nothing. Thank you. Moving on to Agenda item 10, discuss take action on international association of firefighters contract.
Thank you, Mayor. Obviously, this entire contract is new. So basically, what we tried to do, and I think we accomplished that, we tried to mirror the FOP contract as much as we could when it made sense. Many times, the work that the two, obviously, the two departments is very different in many cases, so their practices are different. And in those cases, we had to negotiate specifically regarding the fire department. The fire department or the union agreed not to include a step plan, which is something you wanted. There are things like the health care is exactly the same as the FOP, the same as city policy, and everything else that's in here is literally everything they do now, with the exception of a couple changes regarding part-time employees for firefighter and EMT positions, and also vacation freezes, which is something that occurred last year that they were very concerned with. So those items are things that were different and were something that's not normally done or wasn't done in the past that is changed in what they've negotiated. So with that, I'll open it to any questions. We have the fire chief here. I believe we have union representation over there, and then Mr. Halsby as well.
Thank you. Comments from council?
I have a couple questions. On page two, the city agrees that all past and present full-time employees shall remain full-time positions and will not replace with part-time positions. Can you elaborate on that?
That's what I was discussing, that basically, any firefighter, EMT position, we're agreeing that we're going to keep those full-time positions and not agree to, we're basically saying that we're not going to make them part-time positions. That was a concern of the union. That was a major point for them, and I don't see, as a manager, why we would ever do that. So I didn't see it as an issue.
And then on page 12, when it talks about wages, it references, and it's 10.03, the CODI and Associates agreement as attached as appendix A. There is no appendix A, and not mine.
There's nothing else.
And we've never even discussed or approved, I've never even seen the final CODI.
You all approved it.
Yeah, we did.
Was I absent? Was I not here? I don't remember.
He came here, presented it, we approved it. We're implementing it. It's our new pay plan, salary ranges. We're hiring employees at those minimums right now.
Well, then, why isn't it attached?
We'll be glad to send it to you, but most of the council members already have it, and I thought it was redundant to include that in here again. It's a huge agenda packet already, so we've already seen that. But it's attached to their contract as an appendix.
Any other questions, councilman? Any?
I'm good.
At this time, I'd like to open it up.
Do you want a motion first?
I'll take one.
Okay, a motion to adopt the IAFF contract.
So, I'll second it.
A motion by Councilman Breimer, seconded by Councilman Montanaro. At this time, open up for public comment.
Ron Jagudis, resident Satellite Beach. This contract has been in the workings for a long time, I believe well over a year. I'm amazed that the final draft between the negotiators is there already, and there is a motion here to approve it. I would have expected at least city council to have several shade meetings to go over this contract to ensure that what is presented to them, that is correct. I, as a citizen, have only had a couple of days to look at it. And that's the ball of the world here right now. I do have an issue with some of the items in there. I too have a problem with the appendix not being attached. I don't think it's redundant not to have it. I think it's something that's brought forward for fiscal responsibility to ensure not only that the council sees it, but also to ensure that the employees are also cognizant about those issues. It is also for the benefit of their welfare to see this document in fruition in totality. Another issue I have here is the future going forward, I see two tiers of responsibility here based on the fire contract negotiation. Those that were hired in a prior year are grandfathered into a plan, a pension plan, that is all-inclusive. Those going forward, who are hired after another date, are in something else. I think it changes the character of the country, I shouldn't say that, it changes the character of everything to the extent that there will be those that have something and those who have less. That is the immediate perception that I see. And what I'd like to see is you have these cost of living increases. I believe there's a page in there for 60 cents an hour above and beyond what there's a merit increase. And I know this will come back to negotiation, but perhaps those funds should be utilized to create a pension for the future workers that protects them also on the same scale as others, or there should be some kind of sharing factor involved here to ensure that nobody's treated differently. And to approve it in one night, no, I have not read it, but it is of the council's wishes and management's wishes that they are comfortable with it and the union that is comfortable with it, that's all fine. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Can I respond to that, Mayor?
Please.
There is no tiered pension plan for fire and police, so I'm not real sure what that was about.
Speaker?
There is no tiered plan, pension plan for fire and police, so there is no haves and have-nots in the fire and police world. These contracts were sent to council last week prior to the agenda being published. I believe we sent it to you three or four days in advance of the agenda being published, so you had time to review the breadth of these documents. It's not unusual for a city to put a contract on the agenda. It's just, it's one approval, there's no first reading or anything like that. So it was done just like any other agenda item. The CODI and Associates document has been approved in a public meeting. It was presented to the community and was approved by council, and all of the employees have this document. The union is well aware of this document. In fact, they have drafts of the document that were done. So to insinuate that my employees have no clue about this CODI and Associates plan is completely untrue, all of them are aware of that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Any further public comment?
Dale Abrams, resident. What will be the fiscal impact on the city going forward?
Thank you. Courtney, can you answer that? I think it's the same as we have.
Same as that we have now.
Same as we have now. It's a budgeted item. Any further discussion? Here are none, back to council. I have a motion, any further discussion? Here are none.
I just want to say one thing. I want to thank the union and the fire department for working with our staff. This is the first time that our fire department has ever been unionized. We always had a really good working relationship with our fire department, and I know we'll continue to have a good working relationship with them, but this is probably something that would never have happened in our city prior to 2011. That's all I want to say.
I'd like to comment. You know, we're tired of taking the blame for these issues. The fire department has in the past filed paperwork to unionize, never came to fruition. So, you know, of course, if, I mean, really, unbelievable. But they have filed in the past and it never came to fruition, and I'm insulted by that comment.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I have a little history lesson here. The only other time that the fire department considered unionizing was back in the days of Mr. John Malone. However, they became convinced that the majority of that council were people whom they could trust and work with, and so they did not unionize at that time. And that's, history sort of repeated itself in 2012 with the councils that they felt they could not trust, and that time they went all the way through with it. I think it's a wise step to protect them, they deserve the protection. I'm extremely proud of our fire department, our police department, all of our public safety employees, as well as the rest of our employees, and so I think this is a good move.
Thank you very much. Any further comment from council? Here are none, Lenore?
Vice Mayor God?
Yes.
Councilman Montanaro?
Yes.
Mayor Dina?
Yes, motion carries, five, nothing.
Mayor, before you go on, I just wanted to thank the union representatives and the police department representatives that are here. You know, I've had many city managers give me horror stories of union negotiations, and I have to say, this is very easy. I am impressed with our staff and how much they care about the city and how close they are to management. It's very unusual for our staff to understand the problems from a financial standpoint that we have and not be, you know, just think of themselves and their own situations, but also the city at large. And I really think we're very grateful to have staff like we have here. And I just wanted to thank all of you for all of your hard work, and I think having a union is fine. We're going to work great with them like we do, you know, like we have in the past, apparently. So it doesn't worry me, and I want to just thank you all for your work. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Okay, moving on to Agenda item number 11, discuss take action on ordinance number 1087. Jim?
Ordinance number 1087, excuse me. In ordinance of the city of Satellite Beach, Brevard County, Florida, updating the five-year schedule of capital improvements of the city's comprehensive plan as mandated by Florida statute, section 163.3177 sub 3 sub B, providing a conflicts clause and severability clause providing an effective date. This is the first reading of ordinance number 1087.
Thank you. Courtney?
Thank you, council. This is basically our CIE update. We've included a lot of projects that are not capacity-related, but are maintenance-related, and largely in hopes that if we do a renovation of any of our parks, that we may be able to apply for grant funding for that, so we included it in the comprehensive plan. We will be making some adjustments from this document to your second reading to account for some of the decisions you just made at the last council meeting and you possibly will make at your next agenda item, and then some other system editorial, some editorial issues. But we'll make those changes before the second reading.
Thank you. What I saw in changes, playground equipment needs to be slid over, correct? Because we did it this year, and I think there was one more I was, we discussed.
Yeah, the other one is the roof. And that's, you're going to hopefully approve that in the next agenda item.
Okay, great. Any discussion?
On the ordinance itself, I want to make some editorial changes. That third whereas clause needs to come out. It doesn't make any sense at all for us to be voting here tonight saying that a meeting was already held that hasn't even been held at a specified date in the future. So that's, whereas clause needs to be stricken. To get the language that's required by Florida statute into this ordinance, we need to go down to the last line of section five where it starts regular meaning of the city council. After city council, insert the words "after the required public hearing," and then the sentence continues on the blank day of blank 2014.
I'll make a motion.
No, no, not yet. Not yet. On the third, one, two, three, now, the fourth whereas clause, council desires to adopt the proposed updated slash modifications, that should be updates slash modifications. In section one, the last line of capital improvements, it has five-year capital improvement plan in parentheses, that needs to come out. That's the terminology for our CIP. It is not the appropriate terminology for the comp plan, so it should just read updated five-year scheduled capital improvements attached as exhibit A. And then, as the city manager stated, there'll be some editorial modifications to that actual five-year schedule of capital improvements when it comes back on second reading.
I'll make a motion to approve ordinance number 1087 with the changes identified.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Montanaro. I have a second by Vice Mayor God. At this time, any discussion from council? Here are none, open Agenda item number 11 to public comment.
Dale Abrams, resident. Do we normally approve minutes before we bring up an ordinance? Question number one. The other thing I would like to state is I was at this meeting on January 27th, and I was told that this was posted on the 20th of January. I couldn't find it on the website. They said it was posted out there, and they said it was in the newspaper. Well, I just discovered something really cool about the newspaper. This was posted on the 16th of January. Now, we've had discussions about public notices and how important it is to make sure the public is informed, okay? So I personally think that we need to have another meeting about this because we're looking at spending, according to Mr. Fergus, could be 800 K, possibly more. I know we're going to get some grants, but that's what he's proposing with the sidewalks and the other things that are going on there. So I was very disturbed about this, regarding the posting of this, and I know that we want to have transparency in this city and make sure that people get the information. Now, if you would like copy- Now, if you would like copies of this document stating when you posted it, I'd be more than happy to give it to you because you also posted an RFP that particular day too in the newspaper. So the minutes is an issue. I think the minutes need to be approved before we start having the discussion.
Thank you very much. Any further public comment? Bring it back to council. We've gone over this for some time, our capital improvement plan, correct? And we have said, we asked each of the department heads to give us their information. And so I, I think we've been over this and this has been part of public record for quite some time.
I don't, I don't understand the posting.
I think, I think the question is that the CPAB minutes are unimproved, not approved, unapproved minutes.
Okay.
And they make a recommendation. So is there really a recommendation if the minutes aren't approved? Am I right?
I don't think you need, you don't, we just include the minutes to, to give you something to read on what they said. I don't think the minutes have to be approved so you can accept their recommendation. Many cities don't even include the minutes, they just have the staff report what the, the board did. If you want to wait an entire month to get approved minutes, I think that's just slowing down the wheels of government. I mean, honestly, I don't, I don't think that's necessary.
I'm trying to answer a question.
Well, I just, we're not approving these minutes. These are just part of the packet. We're not approving.
Right, you're just, it's just there for your information.
I don't, I don't think that was the question.
Well, that was the, the question was why are you approving the minutes?
Let her finish. Thank you.
I think the question was you, you have a recommendation by advisory board with unapproved minutes. So is, is really, is, is that official?
We have a recommendation, we have a staff report that describes the recommendation of the CPAB board. And we included the minutes for your information so you could have something to read. It doesn't, it's not, you don't have to have approved minutes to accept a recommendation for a board.
Thank you. Do I have any further discussion? Hearing none, Lenore?
Councilwoman Bryner?
Yes.
Councilwoman Deanen?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Goddard?
Yes.
Councilwoman Montanaro?
Yes.
Yes, motion carries. Thank you. Moving on to agenda item number 12. Discuss, take action on capital improvement plan prioritization for the Pelican Beach Park restroom roof replacement. Allen?
Good evening. Before you tonight are three proposals, actually four, one for repair, three for replacement of the roof at Pelican Beach Park, the roof of the restroom facility. It's about seven years old, going on eight, and, which was, is normally not the, the timeframe that you look at replacing a roof. But the material that was used, the proximity to the ocean and the situation with the sea grapes and the, the salt water constantly sitting on the roof kind of exacerbated the situation and promoted corrosion at a higher rate than you would, you'd normally see. The pavilion roofs are of the same material, don't have the same problem because they're constantly in the sun and they're not wet all the time. We, we think, we saw this happen about three years after the roof was put on. We called the contractor, they came out, there was no, no workmanship issues, it was just the material and the corrosion issue dealing with, dealing with the salt water and the moisture. That warranty is on, is, there is no warranty, let's put it this way. There is no warranty for building or the material that close to the ocean. If it's within a half mile of the ocean or if it's due in any way to salt air environment, then the, there is no warranty on the, on the material. So in researching the replacement, I, we did find material that is warrantable for 20, for 25 years. And that is, takes into consideration the salt air environment. And like I said, there's three proposals in front of you, the lowest being $10,300. And we'd take that out of the street resurfacing line item and replace it when I had it programmed in 1617 for the roof to be replaced.
Thank you, Al. Questions from council, staff?
I'm with the approved roof replacement by Jason Duff construction in the amount of $10,300.
I have a motion.
Second.
By Vice Mayor Goddard, second by Councilman Montanaro. Question, though it's not warranted, what's the life expectancy? Is there, is it better than the one we just are taking off?
Oh, yes. Yeah, they wouldn't warranty for 25 years if they didn't think it was going to last 25 years.
Okay, all right. Any further comment from council? Open for public comment on agenda item number 12.
Ron Drago, resident, Satellite Beach. Thank you, Mr. Potter. We know it wasn't the worst for a while for addressing this issue and not letting it go further, further deterioration. I have one suggestion though, and that could apply to many of the structures on the beach that the city owns, is somehow, somehow schedule in on a quarterly basis or every six months at minimum to simply pressure wash the facilities, the roofs, eaves and everything, whatever it takes, including the walkovers. Many residents on the, on the beach do do that preemptive strike. It prolongs the materials, whether they're standard or substandard, and probably the warranty's going to read going forward that yes, you got 25 years, provided you're doing something with it. It's just a preemptive strike to pressure wash. Thank you.
Thank you very much for coming.
Yeah, and just to answer Ron's point there, it is, and one of the warranties, it is a requirement that you do pressure wash or, you know, clean it with fresh water once, once, like twice a year. And that, we definitely programmed that into the, into the equation. I, in this situation, I don't know if it would have helped much because moisture was the issue. It was constantly staying wet because, you know, it wasn't in sun.
So we're capable of doing that? You have that programmed into the new one?
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much. Any further public comment? Hearing none, close that portion. Any comment from further discussion from council? Hearing none, Lenore?
Councilwoman Bryner?
Yes.
Councilwoman Deanen?
Yes.
Councilwoman Montanaro?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Goddard?
Yes.
Yes, motion carries, five nothing. Thank you very much, Al.
Thank you.
Moving on to agenda item 13. Discuss, take action on the use of personal email accounts for city-related items and business. I believe Councilwoman Deanen asked for this to be put on the agenda.
Yes, I did.
Who would like to take the lead?
Oh, I will. I'll just fill, fill in why this request came about. I forget which day it was, last couple Tuesdays ago, I got a call from the city manager that a citizen has put in a request for all my personal emails. I'm sorry. Several weeks ago, a citizen put in a request requesting all my personal emails relating to the city since I was elected. Now, that's two and a half years ago. And it's really not a problem, but it's very time consuming. And in the interim, this, the city manager requested me to give a specific date. I can't do that. There's a lot of emails to go through for content. And then she requested that I come in and talk to both Mr. Beadle and Mr. Shepherd. Unfortunately, I was called to work and that email's not in this package. I was called to work late on a Thursday. I notified him right away that I had to go out of town. And they requested the meeting and never followed up with another meeting after that. Not an email, not a call, asking me to come back in on a different day when my work schedule would allow. So I just wanted to make sure everybody was aware of that. Now that we've been through four city managers, I've been in office since 2011 and I've always used my personal email with respect to some of the city business. The only issue really is if someone puts in a public records request, I need to produce those documents. And I'm fine with doing that. But I, and that's why I requested that it be on the agenda. I've seen other, actually, all of our board members use their personal email with respect to city business. And before I was in office, former councilmen used their personal email for city business. I was the one actually pushing for city computers to be issued to the council people and got pushback and it never happened. So all of us use our personal emails because we download documents, because we don't have city-issued computers. So I thought we would bring it up and discuss it today.
Okay, thank you.
I was actually not going to speak with you about using your personal email per se. I was going to speak with you about how you're using your personal email. The emails that we are going to talk to you about were the two emails that I included in your, in this packet. And that, that included an email in which you cut and pasted an email from me out of the city email into your personal account and then sent it off. And what I wanted to, to discuss with you is that when you do things like that, it makes it and gives the perception to the community as well as the staff that you're trying to avoid sunshine laws when you're doing that. The second item is that the email that, that, the second email that's in here, there's a discussion regarding trying to get J-LAC to perform an audit on the city. That was done from your personal email. And, and I wanted to talk to you about not only that issue, but also the issue that there's some, some derogatory things that are in that email and that went to a county commissioner's public records. And that sometimes when these emails, you think they're personal, but they are city business, they can get around because that's how email works. And sometimes we don't realize that it's going to get to where they're, they're going. But I, what I wanted to do is caution people and really hope that council doesn't use your personal email account, that we give you city email accounts for a reason, and that's to avoid things like this. So that's what I was wanting to talk to you about. It wasn't necessarily the, the issue of, you know, you shouldn't use your personal email account even though I would prefer you not to. It was how it was being done in these two instances. And there's many more that we could talk about later. But that, these two are the, are the good examples that I was trying to give you is that, that, that there's two problems there. And that's what I wanted to talk to you about.
So basically, you're making an example out of me when I requested that we just discuss the use of personal email. So there's obviously a lack of communication between you and me and you and you and me because you never set up an additional meeting with me. I'm, I'm bewildered.
Well, you canceled the meeting on Friday and we, we were publishing the agenda and you asked to make this an agenda, this, this, the issue of use of personal emails and that's the exact reason why I was asking you to meet. So that's what I, that's, I was expecting you, I was assuming that you wanted the issue that I was going to talk to you about as a agenda item because you wanted to just be discussed in a transparent manner. That's what you said.
I have no problems with the contents of the, the contents of the emails. Is there anything, there's two wonderful attorneys sitting here. Is there anything that prohibits me from contacting a constituent or another commissioner with respect to anything?
Jim, do you want me to opine? Okay. First, I'm going to answer your question and I'm going to address your incredibly unfounded remarks towards me. Unbelievable. The answer is you can contact anybody you want, you simply can't hide it from public records if it's about public business.
I'm not hiding it.
That's the important thing. Secondarily, I didn't request a meeting, I was invited to the meeting, it was canceled. I didn't schedule it, I wouldn't have scheduled it, it's not my role. It is not Mr. Beadle's role. That's the reality of the situation. So whatever animus you have towards me, and for that matter, Mr. Beadle is misplaced. We didn't set up the meeting we were asked to attend.
So was I. And unfortunately, I had to cancel.
I was trying to set up the meeting to discuss this in a meeting. And from what your email said, it seemed like you wanted to discuss it as an agenda item.
The use of personal email, which...
So that, that's what I was discussing. I said, additionally, please call me when you have available to have discussion with our attorneys regarding the use of personal email account for city-related business. And you asked to make it an agenda item.
The use of personal email, which you published and apparently, I think, is that...
That's the subject we're talking about.
I just, I just, I think it's ridiculous. We were supposed to talk about the use of personal email. But it is what it is, they're public records. So in due time, I will produce all of my emails related to city business, not a problem. Okay, well...
I guess, I have, I've got a question.
I've got a question because these are my city cards that I got from 2002. They have a city email address on the bottom of them and we had city email accounts in 2002. And I believe that the city attorney addressed us on sunshine violation issues and how we needed to operate and how we needed to use our city email accounts. And I find it hard to believe that that discussion wasn't in place when you came on council. This is what the city email account is for, is for city business. Circumventing city business by using a personal email address and, and looking at some of the stuff that is written, written here, I find appalling, especially the fact of calling one of our citizens the name that you called him. And it's public record. It was sent to a county commissioner's office. Is that how we portray Satellite Beach as operating? We've never operated that way before. And I find these, I find these offensive.
Question. If we use our personal email to contact another elected official, government agency concerning city business?
Yes.
Then therefore, that would be a public record?
Yes, sir, it would be.
Okay, thank you.
You know, the interesting thing about public records is it's not that complicated. It's not that hard to head a CC to the city email account if you're going to use your personal account. And that will happen, you know why? Because if your personal email account is out in the community, people will know it and use it. And no matter what you want them to do, they will respond on whatever account they happen to have pop up in their email box. It's your responsibility to do something about that and to make sure that the record gets to where it needs to be, not the citizens', yours. That's what you swore on to.
Well, you know, I'm not going to sit here and continue to be lectured over this issue. I understand what a public record is. I've also put in numerous complaints about how slow the city server is. And if you look at the spelling, it's because, and I've expressed it to you and I expressed it to you when you were the interim city manager. When I spell check, it bogs the system down. I don't know how many times I've called IT and asked them to correct it and they give me more storage. I can't sit there all night long and wait for the thing to circle, it's the thing to send out one email. So it's a, you know, it's, it's an efficiency issue as well.
You're the, literally the only person that has that problem.
Well, maybe it's my computer. But I've requested that they issue computers to us when I, when I first got on board and it didn't happen. It's not my, you know, what am I supposed to say? If it's, if my, my computer is old, I mean, what do you want me, what do you want me to say? I'm supposed to go out and buy a new computer for, for you? And it's not happening.
Questions, please.
Okay. This all goes to a bigger issue which is revealed in these emails. There's one here addressed to, hey, big F'er from little F'er. Turns out, big F'er is Greg Billman and little F'er is Ms. Deanen. And in that email, Ms. Deanen says, "I am uncomfortable talking the commissioners except Trudy because I am on council and it will give the appearance that I am trying to usurp the authority of the council at large and council will censure me." If that is not a clear admission that she knows that she is doing something she should not be doing, I don't know how it could be more obvious. And here's the bigger issue. We have a council member who has been acting as a direct conduit to the clerk of court in the audit proceedings. And the volume of emails that were obtained in the public records requests show that very clearly. I will say, I have never in my life encountered anyone who so thoroughly fails to understand an elected official's fiduciary responsibility to the organization that they were elected to represent, as we have here in this example. to represent, as we have here in this example. It's juvenile, it's dishonest, and there are a lot of other adjectives that can be applied to it. So, my question is, and I would like the attorney to give us some advice on this, what options are available to us to deal with a council member who is knowingly and deliberately trying to undermine the authority of the council majority? The reason that we have been allowing the, directing the city manager to handle these matters for us is because we have a council member who is acting against the best interest of this city to pursue a personal agenda. And this council needs to take some action, and I'm asking the attorney to find out what that is and advise us on what our options are.
Excuse me, please. Voice, thank you. Excuse me, I'm sorry.
I'm not, are you asking me or Mr. Beetle? Because he's your city attorney.
Either, and/or both. We want some information.
I'm happy to do what I can, but I don't want to step on anybody's toes.
Hit it. You can do it.
All right. And Jim, you'll know your charter way better than I will, but I have some experience in this area. And I want to say this, not in defense of anyone, but just so that facts are known. You do not give up your right to not like your government or to think your government is doing something wrong just because you got elected to serve one. That would be improper, and I don't want to leave anybody with that impression. Ms. Deenan, nor either one of you, none of you gave up that right when you got elected. So, that's important for you to understand. I've actually been in situations where I had city council members suing the city. It's happened. It's very, very difficult. You can only hope that somewhere in those moments of quiet reflection, they might understand that there's a bigger picture than personal agendas. And sometimes they do, and sometimes they don't. Whether you can actually do anything as a council would be provided for in your charter if it is there. By state law, there's nothing you can do. There are recalls and other things. None of this meets the criteria for those, and they would be initiated by citizens nonetheless anyway. So, it's important that you understand that. And I would also tell you, which will not probably meet with some popular opinion here amongst the members of the council, that were you to consider amending your charter in such a way to allow you to do something like censure or whatever, Mr. Beetle may disagree, and certainly, he's your city attorney you should listen to. But for a lot of reasons, I wouldn't recommend that either. The city government is supposed to be rough and tumble. It's supposed to be about fair and free debate. It's supposed to be about a lot of things, about the exchange of ideas. Where you cross the line is when you try to undermine everything the city's trying to do, why you can't let go of an issue, and why you can't accept a vote that's already been made multiple times. That's the problem. Not the debate, not the disagreements, no matter how strong. If you're going to have a democracy, you've got to roll with those debates. But you've got to note when the battle's over. That's the issue here.
I would like to comment.
To me, the, and so...
Is there a, and so?
And so, as it sits here today, unless your charter provides something, procedure that I'm not aware of, and it may, Mr. Beetle may be able to tell you that, the answer is, you probably can't do anything. And if you were asking me, should you, the answer would be, probably not. You can just try to encourage as best you can for each and each one of you to remember that when it's your issue and it doesn't go the way you want, that's the system, and you simply move on. That's the system.
Thank you very much. Counsel, I'm glad you still have any more questions to add.
Well, I just find it hard to accept that when we have one individual who is clearly, and we have it, we have public records that show that's trying to undermine the direction the city wants to take, I just find it, because it's clear that the individual and those allies don't seem inclined to stop because they can't take no for an answer. And my question would be, does it, in order for, in order for the council to issue a censure, which Ms. Deenan alluded to, I would think that we have the authority to do that without it being in the city charter or other document.
Again, I will defer to your city attorney, but you may. I've had this question come up about whether or not you could censure. In one of my cities, it may not have made the news here, but it was really big news at the time, not more than about a couple of years ago, a sitting council member was busted for prostitution, and he also had not disclosed that he'd previously been arrested in the last two or three months before that for DUI. So, immediately, the question of censure came up, and there was considerations at that time about whether that should be done. And I was asked, and that's why this is something I'm very familiar with, was there authority for that? I said, there was, and I would repeat that today, absent different advice from your city attorney on the charter, that there was nothing in the charter that either allowed it nor that prohibited it. And under general home rule authority, city governments have the ability to do anything that's not specifically prohibited by general or special law. So, with that being the guideline, the answer is, you can probably do that, but it would be wrong for me to tell you with a guarantee that you could do so without free of a lawsuit. And that's important to understand because a lawsuit that you win is still a lawsuit for which you pay. And so, that's what I told them. And then they had to make the decision, or what ultimately did. I think they, that particular councilman was removed from a specific office. I think he was vice mayor at the time. They took away his title, which was within their discretion to do, and ultimately, a few weeks later, he resigned. But that's the way that one ended. But again, you know, this issue of undermining is something that unfortunately, I confront all too often in the cities I represent. It's always the case when somebody is on one side of an issue and somebody's on the other, or the majority's on the other, and those balances change all the time. As a city attorney, one of the things that you have to learn, if you have to keep your job, is to try to make sure you treat everybody fairly. So, if you yell at one, you yell at another. If they deserve it, then you think you need to stand up and say something. And that's what I did. So, we may think I single you, but you just happen to be the first one, don't I? The reality is, that's how it goes. And it is unfortunate when people cross what I believe is the line that should be there, but there's no legal line. There's no legal line that says that you or anyone else on the council can work for any agenda you choose to until or unless the voter say you're out. And so, if you're not violating the law, you can do.
Would you add anything to that, Mr. Beetle?
Pretty much not. Mr. Shepherd hit on the item that I would have totally agreed with, is that each council member has the right to express their opinion and basically work whatever agenda they want. You know, it's kind of whose ox is being gored at the moment. And that's pretty much all I can really say. I mean, what, you know, my recollection is, is that the charter does provide for some sanctions. I don't remember what they are off the top of my head. Where council would want to go with that, I don't know. That's obviously something that needs to be looked into. I'm not prepared to answer that question tonight. But, I mean, I agree with Mr. Shepherd's analysis that every council member up here has a personal agenda on some aspect of what's going on in the city. I mean, you may agree on certain things, and you may not agree on other things. Tonight, we had votes of five-nothing on the labor contracts. Everybody agreed on that the city needed to have those things go through. Everybody on council has a pet project, and other council members may not agree with that. You just move on, or you hope that everybody will move on after that. And that's, I mean, beyond that, there's really not much more I can add from what Mr. Shepherd said. Thank you.
Yeah, well, since it was brought up, back in 2011 when I ran, one of the staff members referred to Mr. Billman and I as Effers, but, you know, in the long description. So, it became a joke between us that he was known as Big Effer, and I was known as Little Effer. And that's how we, that's what we called each other. You probably have seen us go out and say, "Hey, Little Effer, hey, Big Effer," because we were referred to by some of the staff as the Effers that want to ruin it for us. So, that became a joke between us. As far as this issue, when this council first got on board, and Ms. Councilwoman Gott was the only one that made changes to the city's, the city council's policy, and one of those changes, and I remember this very, very descriptly because I was absent during that meeting. It was December 6th, I think, because I go up every year for medical treatment to Philadelphia. And in that policy, there was language in there where no councilperson would be allowed to contact any outside entity, including any consultant. And I remember I handed, I handed in a written statement that was read into the record. And miraculously, that policy change never happened. And then it even went further to say, "We'll be subject to censure." And that, and we never adopted that. It never went into the policy. So, I feel like I've been targeted. It's, there's no, I mean, there's no, I don't know, I'm getting tired of the time. It's apparent that Ms. Gott doesn't. We're not on the same ideals or ideas, and, you know, she's using her political muscle to try to censure me or to have me removed from office. That, I appreciate the lecture and the legal advice, actually, the legal advice and the lecture. I understand it, but I have constituents. They ask questions. I contact outside agencies to get information if I need to, and that's my right to do that, doing my research, to do my job up here on behalf of the people.
Here's my concern. I have no concern to language that's used in emails. Doesn't bother me a bit. None of my business, really. However, anybody wants to speak, that's up to you. My concern is, if you're, from your safety and everybody's safety here as being on council, that if we use our personal email, you have the right to contact whomever you want. I mean, you were elected, you were put here. I don't have that. But I have a trouble not being transparent about if you contact J-LAC and their staff and so forth concerning the city on your personal email, and you feel strong enough about it, bring it here. I mean, show it. You know, that to me, excuse me, I don't want to hear it from, anymore, please.
You want to go in?
No, I just want you to respect the person that's speaking, whomever it is up here. Thank you. So, my concern is, I don't personally have, you have your opinion, you're a very smart lady, and your opinion is your opinion, and you have that right. But what I, I don't want to undermine that it hurts the city without being transparent, where if you're going to J-LAC or other agencies to cause an issue with the city, then I have concern about that. And if you feel that strong, and I know you feel very strong because, about the CRA and so forth, and I thank you for that, but I also think that if you're going to contact those agencies strong enough to bring it up here and either discuss it, we might not agree, but then it's all in the open, and you wouldn't get in trouble because of this reason. If you contacted J-LAC or any of those staff members, and somebody wanted to say to you, "I want a public records request because you contacted them from your personal computer," rather than if you did it from the city's email, then you save that problem and issue that you might run into. And it doesn't mean it's just you. It could be any of us up here. That's why we have city emails. And so, that's my concern, is when I swore on the oath here, come up here, just to defend the city of Satellite Beach, I'm not saying we're all going to agree on it. But the issue is, I want to know it, what the problems are, put it up here. If you went to J-LAC and wrote him something, fine, stand up for it. But I don't want you to get in trouble because you wouldn't bring it here, and you circumvent it by using your home computer. So, that's just, listen, that's just my issue. You have the right to speak however you want on your emails. Cheryl Dunbar, excuse me, doesn't bother me one bit. None of my business, really. But it is my business because I think we are protectors of the city of Satellite Beach. We're all elected officials. You are too. And I think there's a more professional way for all of us to go about it to make it a better city. And so, that's just my opinion on it. And, you know, I'm personally not interested in censoring you. When I read some of the emails that you want, we've got to try to get to J-LAC and have all these people write, then when something legally does come up, I think there is a tough issue that this information goes to the other attorneys, and they get it before we can use it. I don't think that's a good way to do it. And again, we might not agree on everything, but I agree you have a voice here, and bring it. Because, again, like I said, if you're doing it from your home emails, somebody's going to ask those questions, and you're going to get in trouble.
So, in this era of communication, which, you know, everybody's texting and emailing and on their iPads and, what about, you know, you want me to produce every email I have with a constituent. What about all the conversations everybody else has? We all just now get up here and sit here for hours and disclose all those conversations?
Conversations are not public records. Written communications or any kind that can be memorialized are. They haven't taken it so far, but they might to voicemails. Believe it, that's actually an issue because, as you know now, voicemails can be maintained for quite a time, whether it be on your cellphone or your personal answering machine. But so far, there's no agey opinion or opinion out there that says you have to preserve those. But text messages, yeah. Emails, yeah. Written notes, yes. Memos, yes. Letters, yes. Notes you might pass to mine each other about city business, absolutely. So, that's the standard. And I don't, no one has asked me whether I like the standard. I'm not particularly fond of it. And if you have, and you may not have, listened to a DVD that I made on sunshine law and public records, I use my own mistakes over the years as examples. But one of the things that happened that is on the tape, I didn't disclose all of. I'm going to tell you the rest of that story now, just so you understand how serious this is. Because on the tape, I talk about the fellow who writes on a card, because he's very mad at the fellow councilman who was just voted against him, he writes the word "Judas," and he slides the card over to the guy. And the press is there because it's an overflow crowd, 400-plus people, the development that was very unpopular with some and popular with others. And the councilman who was sitting next to him, who he was mad at, then starts pointing at the note and tapping me, poking me in the ribs. What I didn't say, and all that's true, and then it made the front page news the next day. What I didn't tell you is that in that video, the reason that that motion left so hot is because the issue was whether they should fire me. And he thought he had the votes, and I didn't know whether he did or didn't. I was just there doing my job. And when the fellow who was newly elected to council didn't vote his way, he was furious. So, it's not about what is convenient or not embarrassing or whatever. When I give the seminar, which I give all the time all over the state of Florida, I tell you, if you don't want it to be in the newspaper, you probably better not write it down because one day for sure later, sooner or later, it'll come out. And conversations are not protected. Public records, written materials, memorialized materials are, if they involve city business. It's that simple.
And I'll also add that the other thing under the statute is, is there's a presumption that any documents generated by a public official are public records, as a general proposition. And you have, and you basically have to quote-unquote prove that they're personal.
I think kind of what we've had tonight is a lesson on transparency, what is and what isn't. I see a council that's at loggerheads right now on this whole process and what's going on. You've been down this path before. I mean, this is the first time I've seen anything like this. It's kind of hard to look at. Do you have any recommendations on moving forward? I mean, how do we, as a council, move forward with this and the landmines not to step into or dance around or tap on or any of that stuff is pretty much what I would like to hear you say.
You know, I go to CRM meetings. They're a lot easier than this. I have a lot of sympathy and empathy for Mr. Beetle. And so, I, but I'll honestly tell you, based on what I've seen tonight, and even though I recognize there are strong opinions up there, and they're very eloquently expressed on all sides of the issue, which, trust me, is not always the case. I'm sort of impressed by the way, notwithstanding the harsh words to some level that have been exchanged, that y'all are behaving, and I don't mean this in any kind of parental judgmental way. I've seen it, and I've seen it when it gets really nasty, like, for example, the guy who's turned purple in the face, and the mayor had to bang a gavel to adjourn the room and calm everybody down so there wasn't a fistfight at the podium. So, I've seen really bad. But if you ask me what I think is the best way, I think the first thing to do is this. You have to accept, and it's hard. It's hard when you look at things and you think, in context, the way you read them, these mean some nefarious plot on whatever issue, and it's terrible. these mean some nefarious plot of, on whatever issue, and it's terrible. And, and, and we don't always give benefit to our fellow members of where they might be or what their viewpoint might be. I think that that, if, if I had to say one thing that helps in terms of bodies like this one to move on, maybe not be collegially friends outside the, the body, but to understand the dictates of what the job is, there are two things. I've already mentioned one. One is to try to, for the moment, however angry or upset you may be, put yourself where that person was and when they did it, and try to truly evaluate, is this someone who is motivated by something that's truly ill, or is it, they just have a different view of the situation than I do? And, and kind of let that be your guide. In most cases, most cases, you will probably find that they just have a different idea than you. Maybe really different, you know? And, and I use a really politically charged example. You know, there are pro-abortion people and there are anti-abortion people, and they don't agree. But they don't have to fight. And, and they don't have to ever agree, but they don't have to fight. And so, using that kind of as the watchword, that's what I would tell you. Try to, as your mom might have said, walk a mile in the shoes of the other guy first, and then, even though you may strongly disagree, you will gentle or calm your language and perhaps help yourselves move down the road. But the second one is the one I already mentioned. Once a decision is made, you must respect it, or you will never move forward. It is time to move on.
I just have a question I want to ask, and it's maybe a little bit out of the box, but I want to make sure we're all, you know, being forward here. We all have mobile devices today. And in my case, this is my business phone, and I'm sure yours is, your business phone. I don't, I hate spending money, and I don't want the city to spend any undue money. It's text, that's the general, should we have phones that are issued by the city?
You know, I've been asked that question before, too. The answer I would tell you is, is it helpful? It will reduce perhaps the number of personal calls and so forth, and perhaps help the city with, with records. But it's not the be-all, end-all, because the number, and just like the email that people will use is the one they've got. And so, you, you, there's gonna be a significant lag time, and, and as you turn over councils, which you do, what, every year, every two years, somebody new is coming on, they're gonna have that same issue. And so, yeah, it's not a, it's not a, I think the best advice is to make sure everybody understands the rules, understands how to protect themselves, and recognizes, as I say on the, on the DVD, you're one vote away, you are here today and a go tomorrow. Because if you're on the wrong side of an issue that people are mad about, last night, we had a meeting in Mount Door. Half the people walked out furious, and the other half walked out ecstatic. And there's a whole bunch of council members wondering which half is gonna vote next election. And it's about a development, exactly what happened last night. I'm not joking, that's exactly what happened last night. And this is the nature of your business. And it is not something that I ever think is to be treated lightly. It's a tough job to do correctly. It's not easy. You don't gain popularity contest by running for elected office. It's a very tough job to do. And it does help, and I, and I appreciate Ms. Scott's comments earlier about having some history. Because history is a hugely important thing in city government, understanding what happened before you, so you can figure out how not to make it screw up again as you move forward. So, so, but that's, that's the answer to the question, is I think if you have additional cellphones, you just are gonna add additional issues, as opposed to having everybody understand what's, what's required.
Right. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Okay, real quick, Cliff Oster found the AG.
Speak up.
Sorry. Cliff Oster looked up the AG opinion issue real quick, so he can go over that, just to see.
Yeah, if, I went to, I, I had made this point, because I remembered, I've asked for AG opinions many times. And it, so, a little education is order. You don't just say, "Hey, what's your opinion about this?" When you go for an AG opinion, you actually tell the AG what you want the AG to think. So, to ask for an AG opinion, it, it, these guidelines are, this is not me making it up. You can go to the website, it tells you right on the website what the guidelines are for seeking an AG opinion, and who can seek one. So, the first rule of it is, you actually must not only provide them all the facts, you must also provide the legal analysis. So, if Jim was to request an opinion on your behalf, he's gonna have to write the opinion the way he thinks it should be, based on his own analysis of law. That's a requirement. But, those, depending on how complicated they are, they can run anywhere from a couple thousand dollars to five to $10,000, just to write the letter to ask for the opinion because of how much research involves, like a very detailed memorandum of law. But secondarily, here's from their website, when opinions will not be issued. It's right on the website. And there are several that could apply here. "In order to not intrude upon the constitutional prerogative of the judicial branch, opinions generally are not rendered on questions pending before the courts or on questions requiring a determination of the constitutionality of existing statute ordinance." Well, here, we know, based on documents that were produced, that a lawsuit may well be pending soon. We've seen the actual drafts of the complaint. "Other circumstances under which the Attorney General may decline to issue an opinion include: matters involving intergovernmental disputes, unless all governmental agencies concerned have joined the request." And that's important, because here, you have our agency, you have the CR, the CRA, the city, the county, and maybe the clerk's office. I do not know whether they have any standing, but suffice it to say, it's more than just us. Second, and last, the one which I alluded to earlier, where the official or agency has already acted and seeks to justify the action. So, for a number of different reasons, you could spend a whole bunch of money on Mr. Beetle requesting an opinion and have them say, "We're not involved in that." So, there you go.
Thank you very, very much.
Ms. Dean, you made the comment that I'm trying to throw you out of office or something to the effect, no, I'm not. That's the boat is stopped. And I agree that you have the right to say what you want, to think what you want. It's the sneaky tactics that undermine the city, and that's what needs to stop. Also, in the email to Big Effer, it says, "Attached is an anonymous letter that went to them," referring to J-LAC, "on the 17th. This council needs to see a copy of that letter."
I'll produce it with my public records. Your question.
Any further counsel comments before I open up the public opinion, excuse me, open up for the public? Sorry, it's not an opinion. Open up the floor to public comments, excuse me. Floor is now open.
I'd like to bring up something regarding J-LAC. I believe J-LAC was coun, was contacted before Cheryl Dean was in office.
I mean, I don't mean, this is not about J-LAC. This is about discussion, take action on personal email accounts.
Okay, emails, okay.
So, what I'm saying, the issue on this agenda item isn't J-LAC, the issue here is emails.
Okay. How did you all get my email address? That's my question.
I can't answer that because I don't have your email address.
It's in the document.
In the agenda package.
Okay, well, then it must have been somewhere in public record if it's in the, this agenda.
Just as a general rule, so anybody in the public who doesn't know this needs to know, if you have ever corresponded with any governmental agency, your email address is public record. And if it's produced, it's not always asked for. But if it's asked for, it must be produced as public record. And in fact, I think the city's website has the disclaimer, all city, all government websites have to have the disclaimer. If you correspond with the city by email, your email address is public record. It's about, that's why they have the disclaimer.
And I just want to clarify, too. There's no emails in this agenda item that I wrote. I didn't write any of these emails, the staff didn't write any of these emails, this, these emails were written by the people that are in the emails. So if you see your email address in there, you might want to contact the person who wrote the email. Because that, that who has the email.
Okay, thank you. Still open for public opinion? John?
John Furvis, 135 Maple. This is really extemporaneous, so I'm not sure how I want to go. I remember a little story, I, I'm gonna make it, it's not, I can't do it justice. But, a parisher in a Catholic parish confessed to the priest that they were guilty of rumor-mongering, of, you know, telling life tales and stuff. And pastor said, priest said, "Your penance is to go out, take your pillow with all the goose down at the top of the hill, rip it open on a windy day, and then come back and see." Parisher did that, came back, and said, "Now what?" And the priest said, "Go collect all those feathers." Impossible. The point is, when you send an email, you have no idea where it might wind up. And it very well, and we see at least two examples tonight, I think, where it can wind up as a public record. So, just keep that in mind. I certainly do. When I write something, I write it as though it were posted on bulletin boards on 95. Because you never know where it's gonna wind up. Thank you.
Thank you. Floor is still open?
In regards to emails, what I stated earlier in the first five-minute conversation, I hope that this request that's gonna come to the city, my physical well-being will be protected by the city police if it arises to that case. Second of all, how is it that emails are sent anonymously and distributed in public, and they become public knowledge with the intent to disparage somebody? I have a great problem with that. And again, that process is moving forward to, for discovery. But I would have at least hoped that there would have been some, some commonality with distributing emails out here in this agenda packet with citizens' emails on there, they could have been civically redacted or covered for the moment, and then brought forward to protect all. And if that's not the case in public law, then I believe all letters and texts will be discovered. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Public comments still open? Gabe?
I believe when council members run for election, they run for election on a certain platform. And I don't expect any council member to walk in lockstep with the other four council members. They have a right to represent their constituents, they have a right to, their opinions. However, I do resent the fact that council member, a council member threatens to intimidate council by lawsuits, by writing emails that are not.
I, I don't want to cut you off, but the discussion is take action on the use of personal email accounts.
I apologize, Mr. Chairman. I apologize, Mr. Chairman.
So if it's related to that.
I apologize, I got off subject. Again, sending out email from your personal account, and if it includes public issues, can become public knowledge. And I, I did get, I apologize, Mr. Chairman, I forget off subject. But it seems like to me that some members of council, any member of council, does not take, want to take responsibility for erroneous email actions.
Thank you. Further public comment?
Pat Passley, Melbourne Beach. I just want to say that I, once again, looking at how my email ended up here, it was the end of the line that was published. So I think if you're gonna publish an email chain, the whole email chain needs to be published. Because what you've got, where you've got this one published, is Greg Billman, private citizen, to Pat Passley, private citizen. The question that I remain with is, how did that get out? Now, if there's something else that's beyond it, which is what my public records request is that I have submitted to Satellite Beach, is what is it that's beyond that? Because the way it looks now, it's looking pretty nefarious. I mean, it's almost looking like you guys could have hacked my computer. So, and I'm sure that that's not the case, but it's, it's got that, it's got that look to it. So how did you get it? Because that's the end of the email chain. That's my question. I want to see the rest of the email chain that this came from, and how, and anything else that may be coming and getting me involved with. That's why I'm here tonight. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Again, we received this email through Trudy Infantini's office. She responded to a public records request we made to all of the county commissions and to Mr. Ellis's office. And this was a series of emails that she sent in in PDF files. So we'll be glad to provide that to you.
Okay, great. Thank you. Any further public? Yes, sir? Yes?
I have been sitting here trying to figure out a possible way to approach this email situation. And I guess I would like to, to hear from attorney, I believe it's Shepherd, isn't it, sir?
Yes, sir.
If, if anybody has ever tried to issue county laptops to, that go into, strictly into a server, where perhaps that, that possibility might be that all county business is done on a county-issued laptop with direct connection to a server. I don't know if, if this is, is a possible solution, but certainly, if you have five laptops that are city-bought laptops, I could see a potential way. It's not the only way, but a potential of solving that. And I'm looking to try to come up with something that, instead of having what appears like to me four against one in this situation, that you have five working together. And, and I think the discussion I would like to hear council now talk about after public comment is over, is how to solve a problem so that all five are on equal footing.
Thank you. Any further public comment? Here are none closed public comment portion. Any further discussion on this agenda item from council?
I, I have another question for the attorneys. When, when we talk about public records and emails, isn't there some kind of, I'm getting really tired, so bear with me. There's something about altering the email. When, when, when an email becomes a public record.
Right.
It can't be altered, correct?
Well, if you're asking me electronically, or you're asking me as a matter of public records? If electronically, the, the abilities of people to alter things electronically is way beyond my ability to understand. I still am trying to figure out Accutune, and if you know what that is, you understand music. I don't get how they can do the things they can do, how they can take singer who can't sing on key and make them sound on key. So, I'm not electronics whiz. But what I can tell you from a legal standpoint, is that you are supposed to be able to produce the entirety of the email, all the stuff that's associated with it, the headers, the footers, the, if it's a, you know, 100 different email addresses, all of them should be there. But, but this is the other thing, and this is one of the things that I, I warn folks about when they're in the position of you council folks, if you are using your personal email accounts. You are then, by law, considered the custodian of those accounts, which means you are responsible not only for timely, and that's critical, because one of the issues here, I understand from you, ma'am, but it would be for the others as well, at any time they're under a similar request, is, you know, you'll get them when you get them, and that's not what the law says. The law says like now, very timely, like now, now. And so that's critical. And it's important to understand that as, acting as your own custodian, you also have a duty, and this, because the law is a shall, to assert any necessary exemptions. For example, if in one of these long email trails, someone had put For example, if in one of these long email trails, someone had put, not that it happens, but sometimes it does, some confidential information, like a social security number, a home address, or whatever, you would have an affirmative duty, because now you're the custodian, to go through, find that information, apply the right exemption, take out the information, and when you respond to the records request to the person, you must tell them what you redacted and what exemption applies to it. That's why the people who do what you do and don't really get paid a lot to do it say, "You know what? I don't want that headache." And that's why everything immediately gets sent to the public account, so that the records' custodian, which should be your clerk or somebody along those lines, can sit there, contact the attorney, whoever they need to contact, to help them fulfill the request as quickly as possible. And then they can charge, based on the rules, a certain amount for if there's a special service charge it needs to be, if it applies. And they can charge for the copying. So, for example, someone said earlier, "I want hard copies." They may not want the hard copies once they figure out how expensive they are. Because it's much cheaper to produce an electronic PDF file, here, hit the send button, than it is to have print at 15 cents a page. But that's certainly a personal choice. The law says, if you request it, however you request it, that's how you get it. But that's the answer. So, yes, you, there are things within the emails, even if they're public records, that may be exempt. If you're the custodian, which you are if you don't provide them to the city, you must assert the exemptions. It's not a may, you must, and you've got to get it right, and you need to tell whoever you're sending the records to what exemptions you thought applied.
So, but I think I'm going back to Pat Pasley's comment about the whole chain of email wasn't, wasn't there.
Well, again, I'm only assuming, and I don't know, and Courtney can correct me, excuse me, but Spark, correct me if I'm wrong. But if what is talked about now is what went over in response to the Ellis audit, then certainly within the thousands and thousands of pages of documents, we didn't say, "Here's all thousands." We actually took out, I say we, I didn't, but I know that's how it was done, the documents that made the point. And if it didn't need to be all 10 pages of a 10-page chain email to make the point, then all 10 pages weren't included because they were, eight of them would have been irrelevant. But if you're saying, "Do I, can I get all of what was produced?", the answer is yes. Not only from us, to the extent we have it, but also from the people who provide it to us. So, in this case, Ms. Infantini, you could make that same request, and she would provide, presumably, the same thing she provided us to you.
Thank you. Further comment from council?
Maybe, just as a reminder to council, we could add to our council policies and procedures that council members will be expected to use their city email account to conduct city business.
There are cities, two of my cities use like this, and that's why I had that in mind. They use them, first of all, they manipulate them, I don't know how they do it, so that they only be used for certain things. They have very limited programming. They upload the agendas to them, they can sit there and see the agenda, and they avoid the paper printing as a result of that during the meeting. And they also have their city email account accessible, and anything that is provided to them is automatically on the city servers. And that is helpful. I think all the councilmen and women that have it like it, but it doesn't solve the problem of, you can still get stuff on your personal email, just any personal text and personal phone calls that are city business-related, but does it help? I think it probably does.
Thank you. Courtney, could you look into that?
It's a great idea, because it's cheaper than a laptop. It's cheaper than a laptop. And we are looking at it from an e-permitting perspective, so we might be able to bulk order. But the other, the other item is, too, is, in the meantime, if you, if you get an email on your personal email account, a lot of you forward them to me, or forward them to Lenora, or copy one of us when you respond. So, we have that in the public record, so I would recommend doing that. So, we, and that, that just helps, and being, enabling us to do the public records request rather than you.
So, shall we prepare, in addition to the council policies and procedures, address this?
Four other council people here. What's the council's-
So, you're saying even if there's an iPad, iPad, or whatever that's issued by the city, it doesn't, can the city adopt the policy that requires you to only use that? Or, I mean, how can you-
Adopt a policy, enforcement's difficult, but it's really, it's not about policy, it's about practicality. Because I'm not sure that any of those cities that I'm talking about have a policy. It's just convenient, because instead of getting a stack of paper, I don't know how your agenda package, one, two, 300 pages, ours always do. And so, you just have them here, and then they use a particular software program called iAnnotate, and then you can pull it up, you can highlight your own copies, just like you would on paper, with your finger, it makes a highlight and whatnot. You can click on the numbers, and it takes you right to that agenda item and all the backup material as you go through the agenda. And at the end of the day, then you're done. You don't have to throw away paper, and they don't have to make a gazillion copies and so forth and so on. And if you get late additions that come, it's, sometimes they do, the day of or the day before, you know, sometimes they're provided a paper copy, and sometimes they get an email, "Add this to your packet, this new information." And so, that's how it works. And so, it's helpful in terms of document management, it's helpful in terms of everybody being on the same page, because you can say in your packet, "Okay, I'm on page 175," and now everybody's looking at the same page. And because it also has your email address, it means if they, if the citizens or others use the city email, it'll be here. And as long as you don't delete it, it will always be here. And even if you do, it'll be on the city server, so they can pull it from public records. It doesn't solve the problem, because if you, I've got five different email accounts. So, I conceivably can get city business, and I'm the same, I have the same allegation. What I get regarding city business, I have to save, too. Text and everything, I save it all. So, don't text me anything you don't want me to have, because I got it. And so, that's my point. And so, you still have to be responsible, but it lightens the load. If you publish, "This is what I want to use, please use this," and you can tell the citizens who are corresponding, "Please use my city email and save yourself the headache."
Councilman Godd, can we ask the city manager to look into this and come back with it? If that's okay with you? Okay. Is that okay with everyone? Okay. Any further discussion on this agenda item? Okay, thank you. Thank you. Thank you very much. Moving on to agenda number 14, city council, our next regular meeting, proposed agenda. You see there's some there, Courtney? If there's, needs to be any additional, please get them.
Mr. Mayor, based on what happens with the Board of Commissioners and all, there may be some stuff come from me, but-
If you will, please just make sure-
Yep, got you, got you.
I do want to mention that we don't have any applicants for the auditor selection committee, so y'all need to do some work on that.
Okay.
Need some applicants. Thank you.
It's not open for public comment at the floor right now. If you're, if it's for that, please get with Courtney afterwards, okay?
No, I want it on the record.
No, it's not open for public comment right now.
I don't want to say anything.
Okay, thank you. Courtney? So, any other-
Yeah, I was, that was the only thing that I wanted to clarify. The rest is pretty simple.
Okay. Thank you. Moving on to agenda item 15.
I couldn't hear. Did you say anything about Beechcaster quotes for the next time?
Oh, no, you are correct. We will likely have the Beechcaster quotes in an option for the Beechcaster at that meeting. Sorry about that.
Thank you. Agenda item number 15, city, appointments to boards. We have Jeff Fleece to be reappointed to CRAAC, Dave Omler to the same, Linda Page to the same, and Dave Deliden-
Deliden.
Deliden, thank you, to be reappointed to CPAB. Can we make that motion collective?
Before we do that, can we have some discussion here?
Okay.
I'm looking at the crack, and we've got two people who are up for reappointment, who have missed half of the meetings each in, over the past year. I find it very troubling. Their appointments are not up until, actually, next month, and I would like to have the city manager contact these folks and get a commitment from them. Are you interested, or are you not? And if you're interested in being reappointed, then you need to commit to attending these meetings. And if they're not, we need to know that. So, I would postpone any reappointment to the crack until the next time. On David Deliden, of course, his attendance has been excellent, and-
Can I throw this in then? On the ones that are very good attendee, being him, and if I'm not mistaken, Dave Omler is there.
Yes.
If he does not fall, can we at least get those two?
Yes.
Because I think we only can appoint the boards the first meeting each month, so we're going to be a month out, so-
Yeah, okay. So moved.
Okay. I have a-
Second.
Okay, I have a motion by councilman-
I-
Dave Omler and Dave Deliden. Their attendance is good towards the boards. So, I have a motion by councilman Reimer, second by councilman Montanaro, to appoint Dave Omler and Dave Deliden-
Deliden.
Deliden, reappoint. Any further discussion?
Not on that motion, but I have another thing that I would like to add. When the city manager is contacting these folks, I wish that she would also look at these other folks on the crack. We've got others who have missed half of the meetings on the CPAB. We've got one individual who has missed all but one meeting over the past year. So, I would like for the city manager to contact these folks whose attendance is very poor, and just, you know, sound them out. Are you interested or not? And if you're interested, then show up.
Thank you. This time on these two board appointments, I'll open up for public comment on this agenda item only.
Can we have this information on the website, under the boards, as far as their attendance records, on an ongoing basis? That would be fantastic.
I mean, as far as the packets, it is, it's not on each?
No, I'm talking about having the attendance records, the spreadsheet, on the website under each board. So, when I go in there, okay, I can see that, all right? So, you know, we can see who's showing up and who isn't. I mean, I'm really glad that you brought this up tonight, Ms. Godd, because I've been going to meetings, and the people that you're mentioning, I haven't seen them in months. We should have dealt with this several months ago, on the crack board. So, I'm glad you're bringing it up. But I would like to see attendance sheets for each board, either posted on the website or somewhere where citizens can look at that, okay, on an ongoing basis.
Thank you very much. Council wishes on that, Courtney? Is this something that's easy, not easy? I mean, is it something we want to do every three months or every quarter?
Well, you provided these documents every time you appoint the boards.
I know we are.
But it's in your agenda packet, and it's on the web.
I don't know that it's necessary to have it as an ongoing thing. This stuff comes to our attention for action in the packet, and this is certainly on there.
Yes, it is in our packets once a month.
Your package?
It's on, it's on the city website once a month.
Regarding the attendance.
To anybody that we are reappointing.
That part I understand. I'm talking about attendance. So, anything I need to do is I need to come to these meetings and keep records of who is attending and who is not.
And then, well, also, there is the minutes from all those meetings that who attend also.
You're absolutely right. The other question is, and I know I'm a little out of order, but how many meetings do you have to miss before you make this decision you're making?
I think it's-
I don't think you have a set.
We don't have a set.
Okay.
That's why we're trying to get a hold of these people and see if there was a outlaw in circumstances they weren't there.
We've talked about this before, and I think I've even asked it to be an agenda item. We really do need to look at the boards and the attendance as an issue and set a policy. In other words, if you miss so many, you're out of here, you're going to be replaced. Because I've attended a lot of those meetings. It's not good. I mean, how many people are on this board, and they're not showing up, and then you jump in in the middle after a discussion has been going on for a while, and lots of times, there's not even a quorum. So, it's really important, and great for the people that come out and want to be on these boards, but, you know, they need to be there.
I agree with you.
So, I think we can make an agenda item and discuss maybe attendance requirement for each one, and maybe then people will take it a little more seriously. Most cities do have an attendance requirement.
I agree. I just think if we're going to have people on boards, and we have scheduled meetings, we've got to have those meetings, especially if they're boards where we have people coming for permits and so forth, and they have to wait another month. I don't think that's right. So, I think it's something we could look at. It might not have to be on the next one, but I think we need to look at it on the boards. I mean, if you miss seven out of eight, come on, there's a problem. Reality is, can't be on that board. So, I would like to look at it, I think. At least, Courtney, if you could check and see what other cities do, bring us back something on it, and then we can discuss it. Is that sufficient to council? Okay, thank you. We have a motion on the floor. Lenora?
Councilman Dean.
Yes.
Mr. Fairgaw.
Yes.
Councilman Montanaro.
Yes.
Mayor, Councilman Reimer.
Yes.
Mayor Deane.
Yes, thank you very much. Any further business for council? Here are none, meaning adjourned.